Good evening, everyone. Today is May 31, 2022, and this is a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
And I'm here. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Tonight, we have one and only one item. We don't have any postponements or orders of the day because it is only one item. Under Reports by Council and Staff, the subject is a City Manager Report regarding the Rise, formerly the Valco Development, and a request for modification of an approved SB 35 project pursuant to Government Code Section 65913.4G is the impetus of the project request. And so, we have our City Manager Jim Troop to provide the report tonight. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Hopefully, I'm leaning in far enough for this. Is that coming through? Okay. So, thank you. Yes, I'm going to be doing a presentation tonight on the Valco project and where we are on their last submission. So, I'm going to start going through. We have 24 slides that I'm going to go through. Hopefully, my voice will hold out for all 24. So... Let's see. So, as you may recall, this project was formerly called the Valco Town Center, and now it's called The Rise, and the development is pursuant to SB 35. Just some background on the situation. As background, the project was initiated by the applicant in March of 2018 under state law. The city had 180 days to process the application as long as it met the criteria outlined in state law. The city approved the project in September of 2018 in compliance with the requirements of the state law. Subsequently, in March of 2022, just this year, the applicant applied for a modification to the project as allowed under that state law. Sort of a scope of the review. State law provides that if the modifications proposed are less than 15% of either the number of units in a project or the total square feet of construction, not including underground space, such as like an underground garage, then the scope of review is limited to two things. One is a determination of whether the modified project meets the statutory criteria for SB 35 eligibility and whether the project continues to comply with the objective planning standards in effect when the original project application was submitted. As a result, no new standards of which were adopted after March 2018 may be applied, and the city cannot consider prior determinations which are not affected by the proposed modifications. A little more on the scope of review. Gives you some background. The project also includes a tentative map application for subdivision for up to 2,500 condominiums with no more than 2,402 residential condominiums. The tentative map application is also eligible for streamlined ministerial review since in 2018 it was found to comply with prevailing wage requirements. As a result, only objective standards in effect at the time of the original application may be applied to the modified project. Pursuant to state law requirements, the project must be reviewed, and a decision must be made within 60 days. The deadline to make that decision for this is June 3 of 2022, so this Friday. The decision is required to be made ministerially and would be made by the city manager. So, looking at some of the modifications. Modifications proposed include a modest increase in residential square footage, a reduction in office square footage, and a small decrease in retail square footage. As you can look on the slide, you can see the differences there. Overall, there are no changes to the total number of units, and there is no change to the total number of affordable units. There is also a change, though, to the overall mix of and type of the affordable units in which the project... I'll discuss it more in just a minute. The building footprints have changed in size. Spaces between buildings on site have changed. The proposal includes a reduction in the underground parking areas, and a total parking spaces went from approximately 10,500 to approximately 7,580. Should be noted that due to the location of the site, state law allows the project to provide actually no parking spaces. The following slides show changes to the proposed plans and compares the original project to the modified project. So, staff did a great job doing this. So, changes to the vehicular circulation. So, you'll see the red colored over on the far right. That's what we'll be looking at first. The proposed modification eliminates Street 1 and is modified to be an enclosed pedestrian corridor or passeo. It is eliminated in Block 2. A structured parking entrance has been added to Block 1. Underground parking structures have been externalized by incorporating a four-lane parking entrance at Valco Parkway, which is... I don't know. I hate to mess it up, but... Nope, it's not doing it. As well as two additional underground parking structures along Wolf Road, combining the two entrances into a single entrance in Block 11. Block 6 did not have any parking access in the original application, and a new entrance into the underground parking has been added. Whoops. Okay. I forgot to push that in. So, we can see all the different entry weights there that I talked about just a minute ago. So, the original plan for the... This is on the West Plaza and easements. The original plans included two plazas in the project. The West Plaza in the original proposal was 1 and 1/4 acres, and the East Plaza was almost 3/4 of an acre. In addition, the original application included dedication of a public access easement over the West Plaza as shown in this image, so that center dark, darker gray area. The West Plaza with the change, the West Plaza has been reduced from 1.26 acres to 1.12 acres, and the public access easement has been removed. As you can see, now it's the white area in the center. The East Plaza, the sides... Excuse me. The East Plaza on the original application was for 0.74 acres with a public access easement over the plaza, which is that darker green, blue-green area. The modified plan indicates that the East Plaza has increased to 1.88 acres. The increase is attributed to a promenade which is not part of the plaza itself since the dimensions of the plaza itself have not changed significantly. It appears that access to the streets surrounding the East Plaza would be controlled by bollards. Therefore, these streets would, on most occasions, function as a pedestrian promenade. In addition, a portion of Street E, which runs between Blocks 9, 10, and Block 11, does not have vehicular, excuse me, access and therefore is envisioned to function as a pedestrian promenade. Similar to the changes on the West Plaza, a formerly proposed public access easement has been removed with the modified application over the east side of the plaza. Among other modifications, minor changes have been made to the public right-of-way dedications, public utility easements, and emergency vehicle access easements. So, changes to the unit types as well as the sizes. That's what this next chart is showing up here, as you can see it. The applicant has proposed changes to the unit types and sizes in the project overall. There's an increase in one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and five-bedroom units and a decrease in studio, three-bedroom, and four-bedroom units. Some of the unit types include either a home, office, study, or a den. Overall, the average size of the studio units have reduced while the average size of the three- and four-bedroom units have increased. Three-bedroom units have increased in size by an average of 400 square feet, and four-bedroom units have increased in size by an average of 75 square feet. There are more units in the towers and above the green roof, i.e. the terrace units is what they were called. This is also a result of the changes to the elevation of the green roof. The green roof deck, on average, has lowered by 8 feet on the west side and approximately 20 feet on the east side. This is a good segue into the discussion about the changes to the green roof. So, the original is what's on the screen now is what it was looking like prior. The private portion of the green roof was limited in the 2018 proposal. Most of the buildings that did not include the tower elements were under the green roof. You can see how much it changes there. The modified project, in the modified project, the private open space areas have increased significantly with the lower green roof elevation. All of the buildings pop up above the green roof, and several of the units above the green roof have large private decks and decks located above the green roof. These include significant changes in the areas around Block 1, Block 4, and Block 5. Additionally, at least one level of the office buildings now pop up above the green roof deck. In three of the four office blocks, the roof of the building incorporates a private green roof at a higher elevation. For building heights, while the overall impact of the surroundings may be unchanged or minor due to changes to the elevation of the podium in the project, the overall structures have become taller in most cases. Office buildings have increased between 15 to 18 feet due to an addition of a floor. One office building, Block 17, has reduced in height by 4 feet. Residential buildings have increased in height throughout the project between 36 to 40 feet due to the addition of additional terrace floors. For example, Block 5 has increased in height by approximately 35 feet, and Block 1 has increased by closer to 40 feet. The residential towers are now approximately 260 feet due to the addition of the levels of mechanical equipment. So, they'll sit above the different residential structures. So, modifications continuing here. The mix of affordable units is also proposed to be changed with this modification. Table on this slide, as we can see, shows the changes proposed. There's a reduction in the studio units, an increase in the number of one-bedroom units. The original development did not include any two- or three-bedroom affordable units, however, with the modification, 103 two- and three-bedroom units have been included. Some of the changes have also been proposed in terms of the applicable rents and mix of affordability units for these affordable units. These have been outlined in this table here that we can see. The overall number of very low-income units in the project are reduced by 94 units to 267 units, while the number of low-income units has correspondingly increased by 84 units to 934 units. Additionally, due to changes in state law, the average allowable rents for this project are higher than anticipated in 2018. However, since the rents are also dependent on the tax credit financing, the project might... Sorry. On the tax credit financing, the project might receive. The rents could be different, and precise rents can only be determined after the sources of financing is determined. In general, the TCAC rents, which are allowable in this project due to changes in state law in 2021, are higher than the health and safety code rents, which the city generally requires for its BMR units or below-market rate. So, eligibility for streamlined review, as previously mentioned, since the modifications are limited to less than 15% of the number of units or floor area, not including underground areas, the city's review is limited to an analysis of whether the project continues to be eligible for SB 35 streamlining and whether it meets objective standards that were in effect in March of 2018. There are 10 eligibility criteria for projects to qualify for SB 35 streamlining. These have been fully discussed in the staff report that's been forwarded to the council. The next few slides are only focused on the criteria which were impacted by modifications to the project and whether the proposal continues to be eligible even after these modifications. SB 35 projects have to be sites where the zoning of the general plan designation would allow residential uses or residential mixed-use development. This portion of the criteria remains unchanged since the site was a mixed-use site in the city's general plan in March of 2018. However, since the project proposes to make changes to the size of the project, the second portion of this criteria would have to be evaluated, whether the development designates at least 2/3 of the square foot for residential use. City contracted with an independent consultant to conduct an evaluation of the square footage of the buildings in the proposed project, who found that the modification request complies with the minimum residential square foot requirement of SB 35. The applicant indicated that they have more than 2/3 residential square footage, which is corroborated by the independent consultant's review. The consultant found that 68.1% of the project is residential under the same rules that the project was evaluated in 2018 as required by state law. SB 35 projects have to be sites where the zoning of the general plan designation would allow residential uses or residential mixed-use development. This portion of the criteria remains unchanged since the site was a mixed-use site in the city's general plan in March of 2018. Oh, did I go that one? Oh, sorry. Too many pages. Hold on. I apologize. I'm missing a page then.
This table just summarizes what Jim discussed on the last page, and you see that it's 68% residential.
My apologies on that one. I must have left one on the printer. So, the objective standards for the compliance, since the proposed project includes changes to the height of the buildings, et cetera, which is usually a zoning standard, whether the project complies with the city's objective zoning standard was evaluated. Since there were no applicable height limits, even with the increase in height, the project does not violate any zoning standards. The proposed project meets the applicable one-to-one slope line for all the proposed primary building... Can't talk to me. For all the proposed primary bulks of buildings. The image shown here is an excerpt from the exhibits indicating this compliance on sheets P-0508 and P-0508.01 of the plan set. Objective standards compliance. While changes have been proposed to the design of the building, there were no specific objective design review standards applicable to this site. For density bonus, the original and modified project continue to be eligible for a 35% density bonus, a bonus of 628 market rate units. Since 15% of this project or 267 units are being made affordable to very low-income households. In addition to the density bonus units, the project was eligible for and continues to request three incentives listed on this slide, as you can see here. The city BMR units are studios and one-bedroom units only. The city BMR units are smaller studios and one-bedroom units compared to the market rate units and an overall reduction in the required retail square footage. So, this is the last slide. So, the next steps are the city manager will need to make a decision by June 3, 2022, which would be this Friday. And with that, thank you for your attention on it.
Okay. We'll go on to comments from our members of the public. I have a number of hands raised in Zoom. They are from Mooney Matapadla, Doug Cheshire, Connie Cunningham, Brooke Ezat, Sashi Bagur, Sujatha Venkatraaman, Jenny, Susan Moore, Annie Young, and Eugene Lin. I also have a number of blue cards here. They are from Peggy Griffin and Govind, who are asking to consolidate their time together with Mooney and Brooke, who are on Zoom. And so, we'll do that, but we'll get to the blue cards after we get to Zoom, and then Lisa Warren as well on the blue cards. So, the same procedure applies as has applied for the rest of the year, and that'll be that please have your hand raised in Zoom or your blue card in by the time the first speaker is done speaking. And again, that is Doug... Oh, no. Mooney Matapadla, which Mooney had ceded his time over. So, the first speaker will be Doug Cheshire. Welcome, Doug. Everyone will have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, fellow council members and staff. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Doug Cheshire. I'm a senior field organizer for carpenters local 405 here in Santa Clara County. I'm here this evening representing over 7,700 members locally. I ask that you please stop the delay of the Rise development. The city has approved this project. For seven years, this project has sat, and now is the time. Sand Hill Properties is working with DEFCON Construction, a union-signatory contractor, who will, once the project starts, be able to put to work hundreds of union carpenters over the course of this project's lifetime, while providing opportunities for women, minorities, veterans, and at-risk youth to enter the construction industry through a state-certified apprenticeship program, giving them a pathway to a career that pays a livable wage with health care and retirement. With the economic uncertainty ahead of us, why wait? Help provide the opportunity for good-paying jobs, jobs that will not only invest in the local economy, but the people that call Cupertino home. Now is the time to build the housing that we desperately need and to help Cupertino advance towards its arena goals. Please do not delay this project any further. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Our next speaker is Connie Cunningham, and I'll go ahead and read off the hands that are raised at this time. In addition to Connie, Mooney, and Brooke, whose time are consolidated with the first blue card, we have Sujatha Venkatraaman, Jenny, Susan Moore, Annie Young, Eugene Lin, Rose Grimes, Fariba Nahat, and Jill Halloran. And so, Jill will be our last hand raised on Zoom, and I don't have any additional blue cards since the first speaker began speaking. And so, our next speaker is Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to be speaking with Rose Grimes, who is already in attendance, or she's ceding her time to me. So, could you reset my time for five minutes?
Okay. Thank you, Connie. And the procedure we're going by is that consolidating time gives you two minutes each. If you can find five people, you can get up to 10 minutes. And then, of course, people are free to consolidate beyond that as well, but it doesn't go beyond 10. So, video, if you could reset Connie's time at 4, we'll go ahead and provide that time. Welcome, Connie.
Okay. Thank you. And I'd ask the city clerk if she has my one-page slide to put up so that people can see that as I go through my talk. Okay. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and city manager. My name is Connie Cunningham, lived in Cupertino 34 years, currently serve on the Housing Commission, speaking for myself only. I'm a member of the local Audubon Society and have advocated for the Cupertino Bird Safe Design and Dark Skies ordinance. Tonight, I am addressing the council, the city manager, and all people who've joined in, but particularly, I want to address Reed Mols, Managing Director, Sand Hill Property Company. Reed Mols, I've met you in these chambers. I've shaken your hand and congratulated you on the work that you were undertaking to build homes in our community. I particularly have been interested in the below-market rate homes since they fill a niche that is desperately needed. I've read the modifications. I like the changes. Thank you for listening. The green roof is creative thinking to add native plants to a large area of open space. You have told us that it had received international awards, and that will leave you with a long-lasting legacy. However, it is imperative to make three more important changes. Friends and I realize that the open space being created is not consistent with the multi-storyed glass buildings that have been depicted. Change one, for bird safety. Bird diversity will be served by open space with native plants. Sadly, many of the birds that will be attracted will die upon impact with the glass walls. Change two, light pollution. LED lighting has transformed our night. As energy-efficient and inexpensive lighting became accessible, light pollution became pervasive. The list of harmful effects is long and frightening. Change three, the lifetime carbon impact and sustainability of these glass buildings goes in the wrong direction. I quote David Cooley, professor of zero-carbon design at the University of Bath, who is a leading design and climate expert. He points to research showing that even triple-glazed windows lose 10 times the heat of a well-insulated wall that the same area does. Excuse me. The link on my chart, the low-carbon impact and sustainability, gives you the whole article should you want to read it. But why I care? Bird safety? I love birds. Window strikes are one of the primary factors contributing to the loss of our birds. Bird numbers and populations are declining by billions a year. In 48 years, North America has lost 29% of its birds. In Cupertino, many of the loveliest birds are frequent victims: tiny annas hummingbirds, cedar waxwings, American robins, and others, even owls. And saving our birds benefits humans, especially developing children. In recent years, during COVID, for months, people were restricted to their homes. More and more people realized how important their backyards and the love of birds was. Why I care about light pollution from LED lighting? It has transformed our nights. We have lost our view of the stars. Could you recognize the Milky Way if you saw it? Artificial light at night, especially blue wavelengths, interferes with biological functions in all living beings. It affects growth, physical and mental health in humans, and has been shown to cause mood disorders and cancer. Did you know that migratory birds fly at night? They are often attracted by artificial light to areas where they are likely to collide with the buildings. And why I care about lifetime carbon impact and sustainability? Rather than seeing low-energy design as an engineering issue, we need to focus on the truth it is a moral issue. If we can do this, architects will naturally design sustainable buildings, and developers will insist on them, in part to protect their investment. Once energy use and carbon emissions are linked to morality and aesthetics, they become reputational, legacy issues, not engineering ones. Reed Mols, I urge you to think creatively again. When we focus on the birds, the insects, the plants, and the internal harm done to human bodies, we change what we see as beautiful. Not too far in the future, we will wonder why glass buildings that harmed us were ever before seen as beautiful. To close, I urge you to take another creative leap. Build far less glass into your design. That will save birds' lives, reduce pollution, and save energy. It will burnish your international reputation and create your legacy.
Connie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you as well to Rose. And our next speaker is Sujatha Venkatraaman. Welcome, Sujatha.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Sujatha Venkatraaman from West Valley Community Services. West Valley Community Services has supported inclusive and affordable housing. Today, we are very happy to see the staff report and this project move forward. So, with that said, we support the staff report of the changes made in the unit as they are both inclusive and affordable. Thank you.
Thank you, Sujatha. Our next speaker is Jenny. Welcome, Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. This is Jennifer Griffin, and I'm just going to start out. Thank you, Mr. Troop, for going bravely where no city manager has gone before. Oh, man. Anyway, I'm a little bit astounded that state law said that this project did not require any parking. Where the heck are you? Where the heck are you going to put 10,000 or 7,000 parking spaces? I mean, give me, pardon my English, give me a break. Okay. And also, AB 2097 by, oh, is that Buffy's? No, AB 2097 by Laura Friedman, which reduces parking minimums across the state, hasn't even been passed. So I don't know where that no parking was required thing, unless it's some other tenant of the never-ending SB 35. The other statement I was going to make is that SB 35 was passed, no member of the state of California, nobody that lives in California, was allowed to have any statements on SB 35. So this is where the public gets to make comments. I'm very, very concerned that SB 35 is still changing. There are other bills that are coming out. It makes SB 35 the zombie bill that never dies. It just keeps coming out. How do we know that SB 9 and SB 10 are not going to be used at Valco? How do we know that if current laws that are passed next year and the housing bills, they're going to be popped into this too? I have zero faith in this process. Anyway, the 260 feet high, are we making a mini Mount Hamilton? I mean, can we even get trees that are tall enough to block this, you know, so we don't see it? Um, you know, I'm really, really concerned. Okay, so the BMR units, how many years are they locked in? I think at this point, with the amount of time and money that Cupertino has spent trying to process and deal with Valco, that they should be BMR forever and ever and ever. I mean, either that, or we should just buy them and provide low-income housing. And I firmly believe that SB, this project will still be kicking along with SB 35 changes 10 years from now. Anyway, I'm really, really dubious about anything going on with this project, and we need parkland. I really think we need to have public access into the parkland, parkland on the ground there are earthquakes. So at this point, I'm very, very concerned about, like Buffy Wicks, great, like, build housing all in every single shopping center, commercial zone, tech park. I mean, that has, her, what was that? I forgot what number it is. That has got to be the lamest bill that anybody has come up with, and I'm sure Valco will use it. Okay, thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Susan Moore. Welcome, Susan. And Susan, if you can hear this. All right, welcome.
Yes, hi, thank you. Okay, yes, well, 255, 67 affordable units in this huge project, but at least it's some. That's good. My whole point is parks. And I really, I am kind of happy that they don't say, well, this is a public park. This ramp and this, this garden in front of other homes, and this, it's not public, because I'm hoping we're going to get some resources from this project for parks, for our city, for our families, for the residents of this project, so they can go too. Also, the other issue, which I'm really concerned about, is water. How is all this green space going to be watered? What's going to happen in the years to come? It's a real concern, and I think they need to think about that. It's something that we are going to have to live with, and you can say it's green space, but I'm not sure it's going to be green space. It may be desert. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Our next speaker is Annie Young. Welcome, Annie.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Chow, council members, and the city manager. My name's Annie Yang, and I'm a volunteer with and the Chair of the Environmental Action Committee of the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. SCVAS is based at McClellan Ranch, right here in Cupertino, and I myself am a Cupertino resident, living within walking distance of the RISE. Although I'm personally looking forward to this project adding much-needed housing to our city, I am disappointed to see the rendering of the complex includes so much floor-to-ceiling glass facades. The city council, members of the public, and environmental experts have all discussed here previously the dangers of glass facades and artificial light at night to birds, insects, and the ecosystem. And Cupertino is a leader in the Bay Area, being the first to pass a Bird Safe Design and Dark Sky Ordinance. Sand Hill Property Company had previously committed publicly to bird-safe design, and I would like to see them uphold that commitment and build a project that follows our city's Bird Safe Design and Dark Sky Ordinance. I would also strongly encourage them to make sustainability and ecological integration core values of their design, not only to meet our city's climate goals, but also to support natural landscapes that set us apart from urban concrete jungles. Will the RISE use only carbon-free energy and include onsite energy generation? Will the RISE have high-efficiency thermal management to minimize energy expenditure? Will the RISE use recycled water and gray water for all non-puttable uses? Will the RISE's facade be safe for birds and not create external microclimates that harm the ecosystem through reflected heat and light? Will the RISE use all native plants and trees to support local biodiversity? Will the RISE's green spaces allow humans, birds, and wildlife to enjoy the spaces together safely? I hope the city council and members of our community will join me to encourage Sand Hill Property Company to build a project that reflects our city's dedication to sustainability and the protection of our local ecosystems.
Thank you, Annie. Our next speaker is Eugene Lin. Welcome, Eugene.
Thank you, council members. I've been a resident of Cupertino for over 30 years, and I'm also a member of the Audubon Society. I look forward to seeing the RISE become a vibrant place in our community, but I wanted to just highlight a few environmental considerations that I hope folks consider as they're designing and building RISE. So the first is, you know, I hope we can make the buildings as bird-safe as possible. You know, every year, 1 billion birds die from flying into buildings, predominantly glass buildings, and the number of birds in North America has declined, you know, by 2.9 billion over the past 50 years, which is absolutely alarming. And birds are vital to our ecosystem. So I think it's especially important with this development in light of the green roof, which I think is great, by the way, but will attract a lot of birds. And, and, and I hope that we can, you know, I hope we can protect them, and I hate to see, you know, dead birds outside the buildings. The second is to reduce artificial light at night. You know, the combination of glass and lights at night are deadly for birds, which can disorient, disorient migrating birds and lure them to these buildings. And, and also, you know, artificial light has, at night, has a whole host of negative effects on various animals and ecosystems, including for us humans as well. And, and the last point would be that, you know, buildings are the largest emitters of carbon emissions. It's actually not from transportation or, you know, industry like most people think. And, and most of that, most of those carbon emissions come from, you know, cooling and heating. And so if you have sort of poor insulator like glass, it can cause a lot of wasteful carbon emissions. So in summary, I'd like, you know, for you to consider three things as you're building and designing the RISE, with one, which is bird safety, two, reducing artificial light at night, and three, making the buildings more energy-efficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Eugene. Our next speaker is Fariba Nahat. Welcome, Fariba. And Fariba, you'll need to unmute your microphone to be heard.
Hello, my name is Fariba Nahat. Thank you, Mayor Paul, for letting me to speak about the RISE. The project, I'm watching this project since developed from the day one, and it's so exciting to see that all the scientists, all the people in Cupertino are getting involved and giving feedback. I'm just listening to all the nice speakers tonight, just giving more, you know, care about, showing more care about the city and environment. I think that's a great, great participation that we're always looking forward to. And I would like to share my support, especially to see that this, this project is going to bring more diversity to our city, bring more showcase, especially the breed, going to bring more beautiful, you know, places that people can perform, watch things, you know, watch TVs, whatever, see, watch movies and whatever, you know, and also going, having, seeing each other. This is a very good project, and I'm fully supporting it. Thank you very much for, for your time, and thank you for letting me to speak.
Thank you, Fariba. Our next speaker is Jill Halloran. Welcome, Jill. And Jill, you'll need to unmute your microphone.
Yes, can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes, welcome.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Paul, and council members, city manager, and so on. I just pretty much like to echo what many others have been saying. I have been a Cupertino resident for well over 30 years, and as far as the dark skies ordinance, the dark skies concern, I think that that's, even if I didn't like birds or I didn't like wildlife, I, I really find those LEDs to be irritating, distracting. I, I don't like bright lights at night anyhow, and I do care about wildlife and birds, and that is definitely disturbing to them as well as to humans. And then just the, about the amount of glass in the planned construction, I echo the sentiments of others. They definitely, there's no question that they do cause bird kills, and birds, we don't need to be reminded, birds eat bugs, and I'd much rather have, birds eat bugs than have more and more pesticides being used. And that's all that I have to say, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill. We'll move on to our blue cards at this time. I'll let our members of the public with their hands raised at this time know that you need to have your hands raised on Zoom in order to speak by the time the first person is done speaking. We do have a couple of hands raised on Zoom, however, that are consolidated by requests beforehand with two of the blue cards. They are again Peggy Griffin and Govind on the blue cards, and from Zoom, Mooney Matipadla and Brooke Ezot. And so Video, if you could reset to eight minutes to remind everyone, two minutes for each person consolidating, and that'll be up to 10 minutes. And so these four will consolidate up to eight minutes, and Peggy Griffin will be providing the comments. Welcome Peggy.
I had three people instead of four.
Oh no, Peggy, actually, from last time, I did allow two minutes per person, and so...
Yes, but I had three. It was nine. I have nine minutes last time.
Last time I gave you, if I gave you nine minutes, then I gave you extra time, because it was, it was two minutes per person, five people, 10 minutes. And so I apologize if I'm misremembering that. There are a lot of moving parts, but that's, that's how I remember the time allocation being made.
I simply said three last time.
It was three, okay.
So anyway.
All right, well, you'll, you'll have eight minutes, and we'll keep that consistent going forward.
This presentation is intended to inform and prepare the city and the Cupertino residents for the impacts of the new project. Since significant...
Might want to speak into the microphone to be heard.
Okay. Since significant changes in details cannot be easily understood, the city must provide the following: a 3D model of the entire RISE project to scale. This must include surrounding properties to provide a true perspective. Residential properties on the west, Valco Parkway...
Excuse me, can people see the presentation on Zoom? Because I don't see that on Zoom.
Can you pause my time until you see? Can they see?
Hey, Video.
Now they can.
Video, if you can pause the time for roughly 15 seconds as Peggy continues, please continue. Thanks. So your, your, your window is now visible in the, in the tile mode as, as the overhead material. So Peggy, go ahead, and Video will start your time again in about 15 to 20 seconds.
This must include surrounding properties. It'll help Cupertino residents to fully grasp the new project proposal. It can be used as a marketing tool for both the city and the developer. Marketing drawings do not provide a true perspective. A shadow study, showing the impacts of these, to these neighboring properties. People are considering solar. They need to know if it's worthwhile. No reduction in required fees. The impacts to our city are significant. An independent fiscal impact analysis to ensure the city is fiscally prepared for the Some significant changes in the Valco's SB 35 new project proposal. More employees, office employees, over 750 more employees. This is about 15 more busloads of employees daily. Greater sizes for residential units means more families. Significant surge in students on the east side. Additional resources to cater to increases in people count. The need for more open space, parks, recreational facilities, and city services. More height density in buildings. Reduced parking. Where will the new residents and office workers park their vehicles? Summary of usable floor space. Over 500,000 square feet increase in total usable floor space. Total usable office space increased by 150,000 square feet. Residential unit space increased almost 665,000 square feet. Previous employee counts are off due to this increase. Previous residential counts, adults and students, are off due to this increase. CUSD and FUHSD must redo their demographics. They should use floor space, not airspace. This would impact schools and possibly boundaries. This diagram explains what I'm talking about. On the left, what happened is the 2018 Valco SB 35 had significant amount of double counting. That means area over 15 feet high. Rooms that have ceilings over 15 feet high were counted twice. So if you had a room that was 10 feet wide by 10 feet long, but had a 17-foot ceiling, you would have 10 by 10, or 100 square feet, but then because it was over 15 feet, it would be counted again. You would have 200 square feet. But only 100 square feet would be floor space. On the 2022 RISE SB 35 modification, they converted airspace to floor space without changing the total square footage. So you got two floors for the price of one. And this is, and this is one of the reasons why the heights are taller, the additional The 2018 project overcounted the usable floor space by using the allowance for ceilings in excess of 15 feet. The RISE project doubles the usable floor space by lowering the ceilings and adding another floor. The ceiling, the, whether this is good or bad, I mean, I don't understand the double counting. It doesn't make sense to me, but the impact, it means that it changes what's truly changed, it modifies what truly changes. You look at the total square footage, and you get very little change, but when you look at actual floor space, you get 500,000 square feet difference. That's big, and that impacts the number of people and the traffic. Summary of tower buildings change. All seven towers are now the 260 feet. Five tower, lower towers were increased. All seven towers now are 70% wider. There is less visibility between the towers, and the majority of the building heights have increased several levels now that the city manager has presented. An example of the towers, on the top row in yellow is 2018, on the bottom in gray is 2022. You can see the change in the shape of the towers. They're much wider. Again, this is on the west side that'll be developed first. Blocks three, two and three, 2018, and in gray is 2022. Much wider, 70% wider and taller. In summary, the increase in retail, it was, it's an increase of 8,833 feet of floor space. There is no retail on the east side of Wolf, so all the residents and office building workers will have to cross the street to access coffee, sandwich shop, et cetera. All employees. Again, to help us all comprehend the true impacts of this project, please provide... The 2018 project overcounted the usable floor space by using the allowance for ceilings in excess of 15 feet. The RISE project doubles the usable floor space by lowering the ceilings and adding another floor. The ceiling, the, whether this is good or bad, I mean, I don't understand the double counting. It doesn't make sense to me, but the impact, it means that it changes what's truly changed. It modifies what truly changes. You look at the total square footage, and you get very little change, but when you look at actual floor space, you get 500,000 square feet difference. That's big, and that impacts the number of people and the traffic. Summary of tower buildings change. All seven towers are now the 260 feet. Five tower, lower towers were increased. All seven towers now are 70% wider. There is less visibility between the towers, and the majority of the building heights have increased several levels now that the city manager has presented. An example of the towers on the top row in yellow is 2018. On the bottom in gray is 2022. You can see the change in the shape of the towers. They're much wider. Again, this is on the west side that'll be developed first. Blocks three, two and three, 2018, and in gray is 2022. Much wider, 70% wider and taller. In summary, the increase in retail, it was, it's an increase of 8,833 feet of floor space. There is no retail on the east side of Wolf, so all the residents and office building workers will have to cross the street to access coffee, sandwich shop, et cetera, all employees. Again, to help us all comprehend the true impacts of this project, please provide a 3D model of the entire RISE project to scale. A shadow study. No reduction in required fees. An independent fiscal impact analysis. The city selected Valco as one of the sites for the current 2015, 2022 RENA cycle and made the corresponding general plan amendments. It is unclear if the housing units being developed under the Valco proposal will be counted against the current or the next RENA cycle, but either way, the city needs to prepare itself for this change. I also support all the comments that were made about bird safe and sustainability, lights and glass. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Our next and final speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. I'm seeing a lot of stone faces out there. Says a lot. Moving forward, I'm hoping to hear from staff, and perhaps someone can ask this question this evening, what the recommendation, what the requirements are for vertical construction of this new project application. Does a formal okay on the modifications begin on or before June 3rd? When does it begin? Is there a must begin construction timeframe as there was with the first SB 35 project submittal approved by a former city manager in 2018? The applicant pulled off an 11th hour end run that extended vertical progress requirement that legislation defined previously. What, that's the only reason we're here with this one. What protections, if any, are available to deter further broken promises? The applicant is notorious for chiseling at public trust without as much as a blink of an eye. The staff report repeats a theme, and when it answers several of the application questions. The theme is basically, it's not applicable to the modification request since there's no modifications proposed which impact this criterion. Well, I would disagree with a lot of those, and I think a lot of the issues brought up tonight show that maybe on paper and per whatever, that's what you have to say, but realistically, we all know, many of us know, that it's just false. The contaminated soil issue was never accurately identified or admitted until well after 2018, and with help from people who cared. The last geotracker update was in March of this year, over two months ago. It should be noted that there has been no appropriate soil assessment for the east side of the Wolf Road. That portion of the property, we don't know anything. Site cleanup is stalled, but required to move forward with any and all project that has been presented for this project site in nearly a decade. Every project would have needed to clean things up, and yet it's still not done. I was told and then shown that representatives for the applicant claimed in writing to the public that they will begin construction this year. This year concludes in seven months. There is nothing being done about the soil cleanup. That in itself is a huge problem. I appreciate Connie Cunningham's and other comments about the importance of bird safe and dark sky regulations, and I echo the concerns and disappointment of Sand Hill Property Company. It's a little ironic that Peter Powell himself considers birds basically as his children. He loves birds, yet it doesn't seem to matter if it's going to dip into his profits or whatever the reason for this kind of construction is. And Connie, I just want you to know that the Green Roof Award was for either the 2018 design or the Hills design. It is not at all applicable to what is here now because it's really not any open space for the public. And, you know, Mr. City Manager, I'm super sorry you got thrown into this. It must be hell to try to get through something that never should have been approved in the first place and now is being modified to make it even worse. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lisa. We are concluded with public comment here.
Mayor Paul?
I'm sorry?
Mayor Paul, hi.
Uh, yes.
I did receive two emails when you announced the.
Oh, oh, very good. So, Kirsten, why don't you read up to three minutes of each of those emails into the record?
Okay, so the first email is just not request to read, just that it's from J.R. Fruin, and he wished to note that the council, that to the, he wished me to note to the council that he sent the email, but he does not wish it to be read. The second email is from Leanna Crabtree, and I will begin reading. If, so Ask One is if land in Cupertino, independent of special district entitlements, is valued by investors at $10 million per acre, then the 52-acre Stevens Creek Wolf site would be valued at approximately 500 million. Development under the 2022 project submission would be, would include underground parking, 7.5 million square feet of above office, above ground office, residential and retail use construction, and a complex interconnected roof canopy. Through an independent study conducted by the city of nationwide projects of comparable size and scale to the Stevens Creek Wolf project, approximately, how many years would it be before the site is 25% complete and occupied, 50% complete and occupied, 75% complete and occupied, 95% complete and occupied? Ask Two, the financial analysis provided by the property owner is part of the 2022 submission for the Stevens Creek Wolf project estimates net annual general fund revenue of 4.3 million from the site. Through independent financial analysis conducted by the city, what are the estimate, estimated revenues and costs received and borne by the city when the site is 25% complete and occupied, 50% complete and occupied, 75% complete and occupied, 95% complete and occupied? Ask Three, local residents have been consistent in their skepticism of the narrative that adding high-density office development and market rate homes to a region with insufficient safe, affordable housing would improve long-term housing outcomes for residents with moderate and low incomes. Meanwhile, the state through legislation and the county through court decisions assert that massive mixed-use developments like the one proposed under the Stevens Creek Wolf project are necessary for the greater good of the region. If the results of Asks One and Two above indicate the greater good of the region comes at costs that are unreasonable for a city of 57,000 people to bear alone, for Ask Three, I request the city to consider detachment where the Stevens Creek Wolf project moves forward as now, protected by state law, but under the jurisdiction of the County of Santa Clara, where the entire county shares in the costs and benefits of the Stevens Creek Wolf project. Sincerely, Leanna Crabtree, Cupertino resident.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. All right, so this is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna refer to staff, a number of the questions raised by members of the public before we go to follow-up questions and comments from our city council. And so I'll just start with what I have in my notes, and if other members of the city council have additional items that they heard from members of the public, please feel free to follow on, although I do have a number of items that are earmarked in my notes here. From our first speaker, we have, I put this down as a comment with regard to asking to dispel a misconception with regard to delayed approvals. So, so just to clarify here, the applicant itself has come in with a new proposed project, or at least a modified project. Is that correct?
It's a request for a modification of the approved project. That's correct.
Right, and so any addressing of this body, the city council, with regard to delaying approvals is inapplicable. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, yeah, so this, this modification request was initiated by the applicant. So, so, and it's been, it is being processed within 60 days, which is the statutory timeline.
Okay, and so with regard to the decisional authority of this body, the city council, there are no approvals that could be pointed to that are being delayed. Is that, is that correct? Because of the fact that this is a ministerial process?
Yeah, absolutely correct. All approvals for this project are at a staff level. That included the original approval. That includes this modification request, and it includes subsequent permits that are necessary for the development, such as building permits, for example.
Okay, thank you, City Attorney Jensen. So the question, the next follow-up point I have comes from a question posed by Jennifer Griffin. How many years are these BMR units designated as such for this project?
So the, the city BMR units, which are total 267 of the BMR units, the 90, those are designated as affordable for 99 years. The remaining BMR units, which are either exclusively density bonus units or are additional units that are required to satisfy the 50% requirement in SB 35, those were affordable for 55 years.
Okay, so that would be 200 and what, minus 90 for 55 years?
1,201 minus 267, which I have is 834.
834 for 55. And Chris, you said that 90 of the 267 units are for 99 years. Is that correct?
I may have misspoke. All of the 267 units are for 99 years.
Got it, got it. Okay, so I was just trying to fill in that gap there. All right, so, great. Susan Moore made a comment about water infrastructure. Is there any feedback to that?
So, so the, so if the, the original project and the modification request, if approved, are both conditioned on receiving, you know, will serve letter from Cal Water that there's adequate water to serve the project. We have had some discussions at the staff level about landscaping, other features of the project, you know, just to help us understand the project, and I'm sure we'll continue to have those discussions with, with the applicant, you know, as the project proceeds.
Okay, and with regard to bird safe and dark skies, perhaps we parse those two out. In the design, this is going to be susceptible to a fairly significant number of bird strikes, given the, the height and the amount of glass being used. And so are there any comments with regard to those concerns raised by a fair number of members of the public?
Yeah, no, I think it's great that the members of the public raise those concerns. I think as, you know, the council understands, you know, because those ordinance was, were adopted in 2021 after the original approval, we can't impose the requirements of those ordinances as conditions of approval, you know, however, I think, you know, it's, it's important for, you know, count, both council and the applicant team to hear those comments of public concern, and it's something, it's a discussion that we can continue with the applicant. You know, that said, I should be, you know, just to be clear, they're not conditions of approval that we can approve, impose on this modification request.
Okay, with regard to the dark skies component of our bird safe dark skies ordinance, aren't the dark skies requirements also applicable to structures that are existing at the time that we pass the ordinance?
I would have to look at that, but of course, you know, these, the structures that are being built here won't be, exist at the time we pass the ordinance, but I would have to look at that more closely.
Right, so are you suggesting that just because a structure wasn't existing at the time that we passed the dark skies ordinance, that structure is no longer eligible or required to maintain the requirements of the dark skies ordinance? That doesn't quite make sense to me.
No, it's, it's, it's more like setting aside what the dark skies ordinance requires. It's, it's a requirement of SB 35 that if we didn't have that standard in 2018, we can't apply it to this project or the modified project.
Right, but isn't that a build standard rather than a regulatory standard with regard to how the lighting would work inside of a building? So that's, that's a follow-up question that I have with regard to your office, Chris, because I, I think that there is a distinction between the bird safe, design-oriented aspects of that legislation and the dark skies element of it. So if you could look into it, I don't think that there is a ready answer available right now.
That's noted, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Next on my, my list here, so a number of, yeah, comments on the bird safe dark skies, and I'll go next to some of the comments from Peggy Griffin. Peggy requests several things. I'll start with a 3D model. Has there been any discussion between staff and the applicant regarding generating a 3D model of the project?
My understanding is that the applicant, you know, does work with a 3D model. I think it would be a discussion with the applicant, you know, how that could be useful for the public to understand the project. It's, it's not, again, not a requirement of the application process, but my understanding is that it's, it's common for the developer team to work with, you know, a 3D model on projects at this scale.
Okay, I guess we'll consider the applicant and the public advised, and if, you know, staff feels that there's an opportunity to discuss that point, I think that would be appreciated, certainly. Jim, you have your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. I do believe at the one meeting I was at in their room, they did have, I think, the other, some of the other councils saw that they did have, I don't know whether it was to scale, but they did have a model out there in the room of the project. That's, that's the applicant's own.
Interesting. Well, I didn't actually see that model, so that would be nice to. It was an older model? Okay. Okay, well, second item raised by Peggy was a shadow study. Is that something that can be encouraged with regard to the applicant providing a sense of where, you know, the light will be heading at any given point in time?
Yeah, so again, it's, it's not required, but could be encouraged. You know, the, the city could undertake that study as well, but of course, we would have to pay for it. We couldn't require the applicant to pay for it.
Okay. Peggy's fourth comment and request was no reduction of the various impact fees. Any comment from staff at this point with regard to that request?
You know, only, only that, that, that issue isn't before council at this time. We do have a request for a waiver of BMR fees that's pending. That, per the BMR manual, that decision won't be made at this time, but will be evaluated in due time, but, but that, that issue's not presently before council or before staff.
Okay. I have a couple of requests, one from Peggy as well as from Leanna, with regard to what I'll couch under Peggy's description as an independent fiscal impact fee, or I'm sorry, independent fiscal impact study with regard to the various financial impacts as well as revenue generation from this project. Is that something that has been broached and/or could be encouraged, or something that we ourselves could go forward with based upon what we know? And if not, what else would we need to know in order to proceed with a study like that?
I'll jump in there, Mayor.
Sure.
No, that, that's something, you know, I guess as Chris said on other ones, you know, it's something we could talk to the applicant about, or the city could undertake that too. There are consultants out there that can help us with that type of situation to look at the costs as well as the revenue potential that could come in.
Okay, so there are consultants. It's just not something that we've really started down the road of evaluating, is that what you said?
No, not, from my own personal experience, it's not something until you, until we have a, you know, a defined definitive plan, and actually more so maybe even to the building point where they're turning dirt or whatever you want to call it, to do that, because there still could be changes. Who knows what they could be, and then that report may not be factual enough for what we.
Okay. All right, well, let's go on to a comment from Lisa Warren. Lisa made note of some of the soil cleanup issues, and so I'd like to ask staff if you'd like to speak to any of that. She also specifically noted that the east side of Wolf Road has not begun a soil cleanup process yet, and can you provide updates to the city with regard to those points?
Yes, yes, yeah, thank you. Thank, and thanks, I think it's important to raise those issues. So, yes, so the site, you know, as was pointed out, there are several environmental issues with the site. The major issues are solvent contamination, primarily PCE in soil vapor, and PCB contamination in certain areas of shallow soil at the site. The developer has entered into an oversight agreement with the Santa Clara County Department of Environmental Health. That gives the Department of Environmental Health the ability to oversee investigation, remediation, and then ultimately management of soils during construction to approve the plan for that. At this point, earthmoving construction is on hold while that process is completed. There has been, you know, an additional round of investigation completed by the development team at the direction of the Department of Environmental Health. Based on the rounds, based on the results of that investigation, the Department of Environmental Health has directed the development team to do additional soil vapor assessment and develop a, a site management plan. The deadline for submitting those materials is in July of this year. My understanding is that the, the development team would like to submit those materials sooner than that to move the process forward. So that's, that's where we are at with respect to the west side. The commenter was correct that at this point, there is no oversight agreement with respect to the east side. with respect to the east side. Uh, we have had some discussions about that with the applicant team and have been encouraged by the response, and so I would hope, um, that we will have, um, a voluntary oversight agreement over the east side as well, uh, go through a, a similar process there to identify any potential health risks, um, investigate them, and develop a plan for, um, you know, mitigating them or remediating them, which is, which is the endpoint of the, uh, DEH process.
Okay, so, um, so, so nobody on council fabricated these contaminants, is that correct?
I, I think that would be, uh, very difficult, yes.
I, I think there's no evidence to support some kind of assertion or implication or insinuation to that effect. Is that correct?
No, I thi- I, I think that the kind of contaminants that, that, um, are, uh, were identified on this property are, are common for brownfield sites and, you know, consistent with, uh, past land use at the site and past adjacent land uses, so I don't, I don't think it's surprising that, that they were identified.
And, and at this point, would you have any indication that the applicant doesn't have a desire to clean up this, uh, soil properly, at least on the west side, which is being subject to a cleanup overseen by the county at this time?
I think the applicant realizes that, that the soil cleanup is critical to, to getting the, um, the, uh, project built and I have, um, you know, based on what I've seen, I have, you know, every indication that they recognize that and, and want to move forward with the cleanup.
We did invite the applicant to be here tonight, didn't we?
We did, yes.
Okay, and they declined to speak, is that correct?
Uh, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Uh, and Jim, did you want to speak to that point?
Oh, I, I just, I had not heard back from them, so I don't know.
Oh, you didn't?
Yeah, I guess I should clarify. It's that we never really got a, a firm response.
Okay, so going back to this issue of soil contamination, because I, I want to be really clear about this. We have had a lot of, um, allegations and insinuations thrown towards this particular city council. And I think that when people are throwing away those insinuations, they should try to do so in a responsible manner. Uh, let's be very clear about this point. Both the applicant and everyone ministerial in this, ministerially in the city are under agreement that to the extent that contaminants are there and need to be cleaned up, they will and should be cleaned up. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, so again, the process, it's, it's, it's under DEH oversight. We are relying on DEH's professional expertise. Um, they, the, the applicant will investigate the site until DEH is, is confident that it understands the extent of contamination enough to make an informed decision about risk, and then will, will, um, designate, you know, either remediation, um, you know, which, you know, the applicant does intend to remove, uh, significant amounts of soil from the site, which, um, you know, you know, may, or may not completely eliminate the problem. Um, or there are possi- there are possibly, you know, mitigation measures that could be incorporated into construction if that were necessary as well.
Okay, and let's be finally clear about this once again. This is a process that's being overseen by the county of Santa Clara, correct? Not the city of Cupertino.
That's absolutely correct, Mayor.
Alright, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Also, under Leanna Crabtree, uh, was a question regarding times to completion, and I believe that the points were fifty, seventy-five percent, ninety-five percent. Do we have estimations of those times to completion that we can provide to members of the public at this time?
I, I do not, and that, that would be, that would be a question for the, the applicant.
Okay. Financial study, uh, numbers were requested by Leanna. I, I covered that with Peggy. The idea of detachment, uh, is a legal issue that Leanna brought up. That's, for me, it's a matter of first impression. Um, are you familiar with this concept, Mr. City Attorney or Mr. City Manager? And, um, if so, or either, if not, uh, do you have any reactions at this time to the suggestion made by Ms. Crabtree?
You know, I'm sorry, Mayor, if you could summarize her comment for me, I, I'm not sure.
I, I, you know, I, you know, forgive me, uh, Leanna, if I'm getting this, uh, incorrect. I, I believe that her basic premise was if there are particular problems that are being, uh, identified here and we're looking at, for instance, with regard to, uh, the office impact and the need for further housing created by the project itself, um, if, if this then becomes more of a regional, um, issue, uh, then should we then de- de- de-localize it and make it more of a regional jurisdiction such that it becomes, uh, part of the county's or even the state's, um, responsibility to go ahead and, and usher through? Um, and, and for me, you know, I, I heard this, and the concept of detachment, um, I would require more research, but for me, there's a certain parallelism in the requirement, much like unfunded mandates. If you're going to impose those requirements and then as applied, the putative problem being addressed actually gets worse, it probably does make some sense to, uh, place the responsibility for ushering in, uh, the ultimate, uh, burdens such as on infrastructure with the so-called larger jurisdiction. So I, I'm just wondering what your immediate reaction is to that suggestion.
Yeah, I, I, so, um, it, it's an interesting idea, and my immediate reaction is I'm not sure how it could be accomplished without state legislation.
I see. So, so basically going back to the legislation well would be your initial reaction, Mr. City Attorney?
Right, to the extent that there was legislative interest in doing that, correct?
Okay, well, certainly I think we, we have some decent wherewithal. Mr. City Manager, did you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I'm, just my comments would be, I think there's more to it than just detaching, and I don't know if that means de-annexation or doing something else, but, um, being that it's within the city limits right now, I would find it very hard to see if a larger municipality, county, state, or whatever, would allow, um, to be, have the city be reimbursed, if you will, for any costs that are involved. I don't think they would look at that, plus you have the loss. They would probably say in that turn, then we get the property tax, we get the retail tax, we get all of these things, and we'll give you something in return for it. I, I would have to go back to what the original question was a while back on the, the revenue piece and the expenses, is if, if we, if that was a viable option to put that sort of in that report, the analysis to say, okay, here's option one, option two, here's maybe an option three about detaching, and I'd have to look into all of the aspects of it, but I think there's, there could be some issues into it that we're not quietly, quite aware of at the moment.
Well, I, I think on first impression, there are certainly a whole skeleton of, you know, frameworks that we would need to understand before speaking to the specifics of the idea. But the notion is interesting. Um, so, so Jim, are you familiar with any detachment projects? You, you speak as if you have some working familiarity.
No, um, no, there's been, you know, there's very few cities that went a de-annex. It's usually the other way around, but typically when you get to a position where it is so costly that the city goes, I, I don't want this anymore, and then it, it becomes a very tough discussion with the county who sits in there, because that falls back to the county to then be the provider of whatever services and whatnot.
Right, well, well, let's just make sure that we're talking about the right, you know, type of mechanism here. You know, I didn't hear de-annexation per se, but with regard to being able to shoulder some of the, uh, collective burdens imposed, uh, with regard to infrastructure such as transportation, further housing requirements, you know, I, I think maybe that's something worth looking into. So that's, that's really, um, ultimately, I think, the, the value of the comment and referral. So, that's the end of my list. I'll refer to my colleagues for any follow-ups from members of the public, from your respective notes. If there are none, then I will go ahead and open this up to follow-up questions, uh, and or comments from members of the city council. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised first.
Yeah, first, it's a request that I, I think this is a continued confusion, um, of whether the city did anything to delay the project. The applicant, up until last week, in their very successful open house, still telling visitors that somehow the city and the lawsuits delayed the project, when I think the lawsuit had no impact on the project because the project, as approved, was going forward, um, as a lawsuit was being determined on the site. And also the involvement of DEH. Now, I, I had thought they, they would submit a plan back in May, and then that plan would be approved, but turns out DEH wants more assessment done, and that this is all beyond our control. I think we, I hope, I'd like to request the city attorney's office, uh, write up a letter to clearly describe the timeline of the different steps the city, uh, did, and then the different steps is now required of the applicant to proceed forward so that it's clear, um, because this, this question comes up now and then. I wish there is, is a letter posted I can point to. Here, all the details is in that letter, and this is what, um, what's on the record. Could we have a letter to that effect?
So, so I mean, I, I can't speak probably as clearly to the entire history of, of the project as some of the members of council, because, you know, I've joined the city relatively recently. I, I can say that from the time that I've joined the city, it's been, it's been really clear that, um, the timeline for this project is be, be, will be driven by, you know, the developers' development needs and then also by the DEH process, which the city doesn't control. I, I think that's been communicated effectively, um, to the, to the developer, and I think they, they understand that, and, um, and, um, whatever comments that, you know, some people may be making in public, that's not my understanding of their, their current position in discussing this project with, um, the city manager and myself.
Yeah, so I think we need a, a letter, um, from the city attorney's office so that, um, all the numbers dates there is on the record, because, yes, some people in, in their office probably understand that, but the message they communicate to the public through their email newsletter and through other public meetings are very different. And then our public is, has come to the council and speak and have, is under the impression somehow the city is delaying the project when we are not. So I think we need something written that is easy for any council member or even commissioner or public that can easily access, and here is the correct information.
So, we, we can certainly provide information to the council. I think as far as the best way to communicate to that with the public, that's something I would want to discuss with, um, the city manager and, you know, others on the staff.
Hmm, okay, I think I'm just looking for whatever is already on the record. On this date, they submitted this permit, and then the city communicated, uh, there are these issues and we need this document, and then eventually they provide the document, and then eventually we approve the permit on what date. And then the environmental issue, and it was discovered, and then on this date, we refer to DEH, and then just a list of dates that of things actually happened. Then I think that's easier to see. The city is to, is just processing it as, uh, what we have due diligence to do, right?
So, yeah, so, so I'm certain, certainly I could provide a timeline if, if, if that's, if that information would be helpful to the council.
Mm-hmm, and I think, uh, a letter to clearly describe. Here is, we are pro- processing this applic- application, um, according to the, the legislative requirement or the city process. Yeah, everything we're requesting are, are just normal process of, um, of processing any application. That would be very helpful.
Right, so, so as I said, I think, you know, I, the, the information I think is important. I think, you know, I, I think I, you know, I need to discuss with the, the city manager and his staff as to, you know, um, whether a, a letter from the city's attorney's office would be the best way to convey that information at this time.
Okay, so maybe city manager's office is more appropriate.
We can discuss that.
Okay, yeah. And another question that...
Uh, just to let you know, Vice Mayor, I'm carving out ten minutes each for everyone. You're about the halfway point at this time.
Okay, so, um, another question I'd like to clarify is, this, thank you in the staff report that you pointed out, this site has no objective standard because there is no vocal specific plan, and this site has no height limit. For a fifty-acre site in a city like us with no height limit, is that normal?
Uh, it's, it's, um, I'd, I'd say it's somewhat unusual and, um, not advisable.
Yeah, so this is not what's intended for this site, because the previous council, although they gave them two million square feet, but they did not intend for this site to have no height limit and no specific plan.
Uh, so, I, I, yeah, I, I think that that's probably a fair reading of, of the historical record, that, that it was, it was the circumstances that led there to being no height limit at this particular site.
Yeah, so they, so they use SB thirty-five to circumvent a normal city process, and, and now we have a project even through minute, they could actually propose a five-hundred-foot high or even a skyscraper, and then there's nothing we can do about it. It will still, we will still have to approve that project, right?
Uh, there, there is a residential density limit, so there, so that, you know, you know, imposes, um, so some, uh, cap on the, you know, the size of the project, but it's quite, I mean, the current project is quite large and they could, you know, have larger units and potentially have even a larger project.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay, so, um, yeah, I'll stop now.
Okay, um, anyone else on council next? Councilmember Way.
Okay, so I want to, um, ask a few questions on the, one of the residents concerned about the parkland on the ground versus parkland, um, on the rooftop versus probably the Inlu Parkland dedications. Is there any parkland on the ground in this project?
So, I, I mean, I think just to clarify that, that, you know, neither the original, neither in the original application or in the, the proposed modification, is there any, uh, parkland that, um, has been accepted for dedication by the city or will be accepted for the dedication by the city based on sort of current, uh, current policies? The, the applicant, you know, um, you know, you know, will be required, uh, based on the current approval, you know, which, you know, won't be modified by this request to pay a parkland dedication fee.
So, mean a full parkland dedication fee, as if they don't have any parkland?
So they will, they'll either pay the full parkland dedication fee there if they, if they meet the requirements for, uh, private open space, um, they would be eligible for a credit of up to fifty percent against the full amount.
Okay, so, um, so as far as, I understand, I think some residents are very disappointed that the parkland, rooftop parkland is not parkland for the public. But when I read it, it looks like it is privately owned by this development, but they do open up some places for public access, but that's at their discretion. Am I describing clearly?
Yeah, that, that's, that's correct. Um, one of the significant changes, um, in the modification request is that public access easements over significant portions of the site have been removed. Um, that doesn't necessarily mean that the, um, the applicant won't open up parts of the property for some kind of public access, but it means that they control the access. Um, the applicant has, you know, signaled an interest to continue to, continuing to have discussion about, you know, abilities to guarantee public access, but, you know, it's, 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 it's their position that they shouldn't pay, um, the parkland dedication fee and, and also, you know, offer those guarantees. At least that's their position now.
Okay, so if I read this correctly, maybe we can have both ways. We, if we charge the full parkland dedication fee that we can charge, then they sort of have the right to say this, you're not accepting this as parkland, this is our land, we can open up to the par- public at our discretion.
Yeah, so, I, so, yeah, I mean, so again, I mean, the, the parkland dedication fee really isn't part of this modification request, but, but, but I think what's material is that the applicant did, um, remove certain public access easements, um, and, um, there's no objective standard that requires them to maintain them.
Okay, this, I would think for any development, if they have restaurants, stores, bars, they would want welcome public to access those amenities so they can, you know, they're, they can have, you know, the tenants can thrive, so, um, so this is not negotiated, but it would think be, it would be good. So this is not negotiated, but it would think it would be good for the developer to or for the restaurants, bars to have that open access so that our residents can go and consume. Would that be beneficial to both, right?
Right. So, yeah, so clearly if there's retail space, there will be access to that space, and, you know, I would anticipate that there'll be access to open space adjacent to that retail space. But again, that's, you know, a decision that the applicant would make.
Okay. So actually, how I see this is, yes, it looks like we've lost some access to public space, but there will be some amenities for our residents, because we really want to go there and enjoy it. I think that's one of the residents' main point. So is this just not negotiable? It's like a goodwill thing? Or can there be a business arrangement, not developed, a sort of other arrangement, chamber arrangement or something like that, so our residents can feel that they have access to this, you know, really nice rooftop gardens and have, go to the bars and enjoy the restaurants?
You know, so this might be another area where there's room for ongoing discussion with the applicant about, you know, how they'll accommodate public access?
One more question is, since this is their parkland or their rooftop, all the maintenance fees, you know, repairs, whatever comes in the next 10, 20, 30, 50 years, it would not be the city's liability or responsibility to repair. It will be up to whoever owns that development, I guess.
Yeah, that's correct. It's private property, it would be the responsibility of the owner.
Okay, I think that would be a good point for our city not to have liability. Mayor, that's so far I have.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Way. You're at 5:15. Let's go on to someone else. Is there Councilmember Willie? Did you want to?
So, kind of a pretty complex topic, you know, where do you start? Maybe the city manager can put up the park, the rooftop pictures, the old and the new, one at a time. We'll try and start there.
Give me one second.
You know, to me, the SB 35 is taking a lot of the control that the city would normally be able to negotiate to ensure a project is good for the community, not just the developer's profit. And so, the developer really conveyed, in my view, really conveyed, that this rooftop park was going to fulfill the general plan's requirement for three acres of park space, not public space, park space. You know, a football stadium is public space, but it's not park space. And so this type of picture was shown over and over again for the developer's measure D. Trying to get the community to say that they would like to have this project, here's 30 acres of park space. And so here we are, up on the city council, trying to be good stewards for our community of close to 60,000 residents. And when there's going to be multiple thousands of residents new to the city, the objectives, the general plan says three acres of park space for every 1,000 residents. And this was, in my view, the developer's intention of saying, hey, I'm meeting your requirement. Look, I'm giving you 30 acres of park space. And it's disappointing to me when it gets changed or whittled away. Now, the developer invited each of us to, on the council, to meet with him and look at his pictures. And we did. And he said, well, I'm now removing the public access to this park space. And I told him, I said, wow, what you're doing is you're telling the community, they don't matter. The only thing that matters is the renters that you're going to put into your apartments. And that's not the intention of the general plan. It's a community. It's not a bunch of islands that are fenced off. So I'm disappointed there, very disappointed. But beyond what I might be disappointed with, I want to be sure the community understands what's going on. Transparency. Don't be surprised when it doesn't look like what they were told or what was conveyed to them. The developer had lots of open houses, showed the community, oh, but now we're going to change it. So now if you can go to the other picture of what it is now, where the buildings are now popping through, where do those grassy areas that would suffice for doing lots of things? Throwing frisbees for your dog? Looking, being able to look and not see buildings? You know, being able to look and see our horizon? To me, this is dramatically different. But it goes beyond that. No more access for the community. The community can drive down Stevens Creek, and their community, their city stops at the sidewalk. I really see that as being disappointing. Just how can somebody intentionally do that? Hello? I'm mystified. We're on the city council, we're not allowed to be in this process, but we can be looking with our eyes and telling the community what it looks like. How many people in the community are sitting at home, looking through the changes that are being pushed in by the developer? He got his SB 35 project, and the community is sitting back thinking, this thing's going to be built, and they're going to be able to go up, take their dog, and throw frisbees. But now, not only is there not the area to throw frisbees, they can't even get up there. Disappointing. So, again, the access. If you could go back to the other picture, you know, I think we have to be truthful when we talk. And that means the developer has to be truthful too. When you show this to the community, and the community said, well, it's going to be up at seven stories in the air, but okay, okay. You claim that this has been done elsewhere, and, you know, it's doable and workable. Okay, I could go up there with my dog and throw the frisbee, I can throw the baseball with my son, kick the soccer ball with my daughter. And they climb onboard and they say, okay, you know, this is what's going to be, let's go ahead and move forward. Now go back to the other picture. And this is now what it's going to be, and there's going to be fences everywhere, and you can't enjoy this. I find that really disappointing. And we're here for the residents. We're here for the residents to make sure that they are respected in this community, that if a developer wants to buy a parcel of land and do something, he adheres to the general plan, the municipal code, but more importantly, the intent. The intent of being respectful to people, the intent of democracy. There are lots of people out there that will cut and choose and pick and say that they meet all the requirements, when in fact, they don't. Not the intent. I'm so glad that my dad brought me up with a clear understanding of values, morals, democracy. He didn't fight in World War II. He didn't end World War II in Germany and be told he was going to go to Japan, but didn't get there before the war ended. He didn't do that without a strong sense of obligation, an obligation to this country, an obligation to the state, and an obligation to the community. And the greatest generation never sat there and minced words and cut away at things. They were truthful and moral people. And I have a real tough time. We have no choice but to allow this to move along in the city process because we have no choice, and so be it. But I sure hope the word gets out to the community, don't expect what you were originally promised. It doesn't look like that, at least not from this. The 3D model might help. Let me also go on to one more thing. Let me go ahead and share my screen.
About 8:15, John.
And so hopefully we're sharing the screen. Is it up there yet? Okay. You know, this is the picture that the resident gave us. And in the top view, you do have the towers protruding through, it's not circling there, maybe my mouth will circle. So you do have the buildings protruding through the green roof, but basically you've got pretty, pretty unobstructed view to the skies and the horizon. The new one, that park space now is underneath buildings, at least that's what it sure appears here. Is that park space? Do you want to go sit underneath an overpass? Or do you want to sit underneath a tree? Once again, these types of details are not visible to the community. That is not going through the 100 pages of documents. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, John. That's 9:20. And Councilmember Moore, did you want to make comments or ask questions next?
So first, I want to have the city verify that the one-to-one slope line drawn from Wolf Road is being followed. My concern is that we're actually using or ignoring the frontage roads. And I'm counting somewhere around 10 to 11 lanes on Wolf Road. And so it makes a considerable difference if you ignore the two lanes of frontage road along Wolf for where the setback is going to be. Now, what I'm pointing to here is the original 90-day approval letter from the city to the Valco developer. And here, they're saying hazardous waste site, yes, the site is outside a hazardous waste site. And then they reference the databases, Enviro Store and Geo Tracker. And for Geo Tracker, they say that the cases were closed. And there was a Sears automotive case and the JCPenney automotive case, and that those cases were closed. But if we go to Geo Tracker today, we'll see that it's open. And there's an open case for Valco. And also what we see, and these documents started to become available to the public after the developer apparently agreed to Santa Clara County Department of Environmental Health regulatory oversight, I think it was in April of 2021. And then you find that these documents go way back. In fact, of most interest to us is probably the Geosphere report from 2016, which apparently wasn't submitted to the city when they applied. And then you find all sorts of back-and-forth correspondence that's happened. And for me, what was pretty interesting was the 2021 soil report indicating that there was PCE on the site, and then it comes out that there were three, possibly four, dry cleaners surrounding the property. So also, the developer provided a document and email to the public back in 2019 saying that the site was all clean, and as we've found out, that that was not the case. So if you give me a minute, I'm going to reset over at the dais and continue. There was a little something about those sections that I think might be helpful. So along Stevens Creek Boulevard, I would like to make sure that there's been a section cut at this location because of its proximity of the overhang to the curb line. I want the public to be aware that we're looking at 10 and 11 and possibly 12 lanes along Wolf Road. And that's my question here about the setback from the frontage road as opposed to using the outer through lanes. So I'm wondering what policy the city has for that. And in the original plan, this area here had about 78,000 square feet of area designated for residential, and I'm curious what it's going to be in the future.
Councilmember Moore, is that a question to staff or is that just a comment? Okay.
So I believe that Planning Manager Pugh Gosh is on the phone. I think she might be best placed to answer the question about the slope line and then also the change in use of the, I believe it was the pedestrian over crossing on Wolf.
Okay, thanks, Chris. I see Pugh has her camera on. Welcome, Pugh.
Good evening, council. I hope you can hear me. I just want to confirm that there is a section provided at Stevens Creek location that Councilmember Moore pointed to. It is HP 0508.01, and it does indicate that the building is behind the slope line from Stevens Creek Boulevard. With regard to the changes to the overcrossing, that is now just a pedestrian, like a green road crossing. Earlier in 2018, the publics, there used to be some residential amenities in that space. That is no longer the case.
Thank you. Mayor Paul, I would like to understand when projects like this come to the city and that the developer is claiming a frontage road, as they are on this one, that I think the city should have a policy which would be fairly logical, that you can't add in extra frontage roads widening the street and then claim that your curb line is the one out in the through lanes, even though you're adding two lanes of extra traffic, which is what they're claiming here. So the setback, in my opinion, should actually be quite a bit more than what they are claiming to have, if you're following me.
I am following you, and that's the first time I've heard the point made. It seems like a pretty good one. I mean, so Chris or someone from staff, if I can paraphrase what Councilmember Moore is saying, how can a developer make their own road and then redraw the setback line? I think it's essentially what you're saying, right?
That is, and I have a few more questions if you'll, after we're done with this one.
Sure. Okay. And if anyone on staff would like to...
So we could revisit that policy for future projects. That was a decision that was made, and the way that the setback slope was calculated was a decision that was made in 2018. And so, you know, because we are, that's not a fact, that we are required to use the same procedures and methodologies for evaluating the project that we did in 2018. So that's, we're not in a position that we could revisit that question at this time, with respect to this project at least.
Okay. So a question about that is that if we take that to its maybe not logical conclusion, but if we take that idea to its logical conclusion, that we are essentially stuck with whatever decision was made in 2018 regardless of how that decision was arrived at, if it was perhaps even absolutely wrong. It seems that we are absolutely stuck with that from what I'm hearing. And I think that that's a very, I think that's a very odd situation. So I'll bring it to the notion of health and safety impacts. Because while we're hearing about the bird-safe design, bird-safe dark sky design, and we're being informed of actual belief of there being health and safety impacts, if... impacts, um, if we look at a similarly sized project, the Valco specific plan, there were identified health and safety impacts with regards to air quality and noise. So I, I don't understand how it is, uh, how the city did not make any determination that there were, would be adverse impacts to health and safety in the original project. And again, for this one, since they have, uh, essentially made it larger, I don't understand why there are no health and safety impacts identified in, in either case.
So, uh, so I, I speak primarily to, to this case, that, you know, there, there are narrow circumstances where you could apply, for example, building standards, uh, building code standards that, that, you know, due, due to, to health and safety impacts with certain modified projects. Uh, those, those circumstances don't apply here.
Now, um, there have been changes to density bonus law in the interim. So, um, is it true that the fifteen percent, I think it is very low income that's being offered now qualifies the developer for a fifty percent density bonus? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, was there a tribal resources, um, check evaluation at all?
No, that's, that's not required as part of the modification process.
Okay. So that, that had, that addition happened in the interim. So what I don't quite understand is why this, this, the law as it stands, it's like the developer can take the modification part, but they don't have to qualify for, for things like tribal resources, if I'm understanding correctly.
That's correct.
That's odd. Okay. Um, so I'm, I'm looking at it like a two thousand parking space deficit for the office component. Uh, to me, that sounds like about a hundred bus trips per day, um, coming and going morning and night. Does that, has anyone looked into that? Uh, and I'll just pepper a couple of questions all at once here.
Uh, Councilmember Moore, you're, you're near your ten minutes, but I'll go ahead and cede over five of my minutes to you, so, uh, please.
Oh, I'm, I'm nearly done with the, the last part here. I think we do need to know what the school impacts are. We were seeing about seven hundred and fifty students potentially in a, in a much smaller project years ago. So we need to have that information provided, especially if it means redrawing of, uh, district, um, school district boundaries. And I'm, uh, I, Foreleaf is being mentioned as providing this data. I would like to see the work. And with that work, what I would want to see is, um, with regards to their residential totals, how much of those totals are actually parking garages? Because previously they had one point four million square feet, which were parking garages and about five hundred thousand square feet of amenity spaces in order to, uh, reach this calculation, which, uh, arguably is a, uh, they, they certainly used, um, the, the Cupertino floor area ratio definitions to their advantage where they didn't have to count, uh, several million square feet of underground, um, parking. So I would like to see the, the full amount of work from the developer. And I suppose one last thing that I, uh, was curious about was the fifty-five percent coverage. And I'll just, I'll show this, this plan view real quick. And I think this is something that, um, Pugh could probably, uh, provide some information about because they're saying, I believe it's a fifty-five percent lot coverage. But when you look at the actual lot, uh, here's Wolf, Stevens Creek, here's the East Side property. So they, they're essentially doing, you know, full excavation here for underground, um, parking garage, two layers of underground parking on the east side. And then on the west side, you have one level of underground parking. So, uh, I don't quite understand how this much coverage is being called a fifty-five percent. And I, I think it probably has to do with, um, how things at the ground level are being analyzed, but I'd like to hear a little bit about that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. And staff, want to follow up on any of the later comments or questions of Councilmember Moore?
Yeah. So with respect to the, the fifty-five percent lot coverage, I mean, I, I, she is correct. That's what the applicant stated in their application. Uh, we did not, uh, verify that because it's not, um, there's not an objective standard to, to compare it to. I don't know if Pugh has anything to add about, um, uh, you know, in response to, uh, Councilmember Moore's comments.
Um, I just wanted to add, I hope you can hear me, uh, but I just don't want to add that lot coverage, the definition, uh, that does not include projections, ground level paving, landscape openers and open recreational facilities, uh, per the city's definition. But, uh, Chris is absolutely right. We did not evaluate what the lot coverage, uh, limitations are because that's not required for this project.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And so I'll go ahead and, and stop the clock there. It's, uh, roughly twelve minutes, fifty seconds. So, uh, I'll go ahead and start my clock here and, um, you know, and again, I was allocating approximately ten minutes to everyone. I think that's, um, a fair amount of time. Um, with, and, and I've, I've ceded over a few minutes to, to Councilmember Moore. So, I, I guess, being the only member of council that was here at the end of 2014, uh, when those objective standards were essentially lifted and the two million square feet of office, uh, was allocated to the Valco site, um, I, I can say that I was the lone dissenting vote on that allocation. I thought not having objective standards was not a really great idea. Uh, we were told by our, uh, then Planning Director that we would revisit that in the, in the spring and fix that. Uh, of course, the spring came around, that didn't happen, but, uh, we did end up, you know, in seven years of, of, uh, of this. And so, um, I, I always came to the, um, to the basic fact of, of, of having workers in your office space or in your retail space and, um, taking that against the number of residencies that were, uh, being offered up. So at first it was, uh, something along lines of two million square feet of office, uh, half a, well, actually half the mall size, which is six hundred thousand square feet of retail, uh, and four hundred units of residential. And, um, you know, at the time, this is almost eight years ago now, there wasn't that much of, uh, a cognition about the balance, um, between the amount of space that you put in for jobs, uh, and the number of housing units you put in. Now, I think as a result, uh, partially of our work on this over the last seven years, uh, there is a much greater awareness. And, um, it, it has been absolutely true the entire time, whether you politicize it or whether you look at it rationally. Um, if you overdevelop with regard to the number of jobs and you underdeliver with regard to the number of housing units, you're gonna end up with congestion. And that's just a, that's just a fact. Palo Alto has recognized it in the interim, um, and placed a cap on their, their office. But, uh, in our area, that, that's just very obvious. I used to work in Palo Alto and so I know what the traffic is like going there in the morning. I know what the traffic is like coming out of there, uh, in the evening when, uh, the economic vibrancy, you know, is, uh, pre-pandemic and normal. Now, if you're looking at the current plans for, uh, the SB thirty-five project at the former site of the Valco Mall, you're looking at one point nine four million, uh, and some change of office, um, as well as some five hundred thousand square feet of retail. And even in the most optimistic of projections, when you're talking about the number of jobs, um, even if you take at face value the assertion that you can find a tenant for, um, all the near two million square feet of office at, uh, a, a much more spaced-out four hundred square feet per worker as opposed to two hundred and fifty square feet. And, um, you know, I, I will say that sometimes they drive it down to a hundred and fifty square feet pre, pre-pandemic. But even if we can, uh, accept the assertion that you can drive that up to four hundred for, you know, certain types of, um, tenants, you're still at approximately, um, two thousand, you're, you're, you're still at a, a lot of units. So two million broken down to four hundred is five thousand. Um, you're, you're at a little less than five thousand, uh, jobs. But then, of course, you still have five hundred thousand plus squares of retail. That's another thousand, uh, jobs at five hundred square feet per job. Um, so, so you're, you're left with a deficit, e- e- even if it's very optimistic. And, uh, I, I calculated out after I take two-thirds of those jobs, because it's a three-to-two ratio, I, I calculated out at a little bit over three, thirty-nine hundred jobs. Now, twenty-four hundred and two housing units, thirty-nine hundred jobs, uh, i- is it a better ratio? Is it a better deficit than it used to be? Yes, it is absolutely a better deficit. Is the applicant obligated to, uh, tie to four hundred square feet, uh, a job? No, absolutely not. So, um, that's something to keep in mind. But at the same time, you know, the, the political response was essentially jobs, housing, fit. Jobs, housing ratio is still a real thing. You know, if we, if we deliver some five thousand jobs at least and we're delivering some twenty-four hundred units of housing, we still have to worry about this minimum number of fifteen hundred, you know, units of housing. And then when you laden on top of that, the fact that this was, um, essentially constructed and conceived of as putatively a way to help alleviate the housing crisis, what you realize is that it is absolutely fair to say that this is ultimately an economically driven engine. Now, from the perspective of a jurisdiction, it's very hard to explain to people, you know, why as a city you're basically saying, all right, well, you've got a developer who spent three hundred, three hundred fifty million dollars or so piecing together the various parts of the mall and they have some billions of dollars to invest into the city and, and make a project. Uh, you know, it's, it's basically a conversation that you can't have with any other jurisdiction because I, I, I think on some level it doesn't register at all as to why that would be, you know, necessarily a bad thing. But I think in our city, we're looking very carefully at the fact that we want to be responsible in terms of all the problems that we approach. And the way I look at it, you know, I've been on council for seven and a half years now. I've seen all these various, um, you know, issues. I have a lot of respect for people that do the work and, you know, push on, on issues like transportation, on, uh, issues like health, uh, on, on, on pollution, because it's not easy. It's, it's truly not easy to do this with regard to the amount of overwhelming economic pressures that are out there. So, so just, uh, incredible amounts of respect for my colleagues on council for doing that. But at the same time, we're looking at a situation where the, the financial pressures are quite overwhelming. Um, and we have a seven and a half year, uh, history of, of dealing with this particular project. So at this time, it's, it's clear, you know, we've, um, you know, exhausted the point. This is a ministerial process. Um, we've looked at, you know, things like pollutants and contaminants, we're concerned, and we continue to be concerned about infrastructure. The whole idea of, um, putting so much density in our city without necessarily a very thorough conversation about transit is something I think that is, um, advisable to have as much conversation as, and as many plans as possible right now to try to alleviate what will inevitably, uh, be a, a very severe, um, increase in congestion, assuming this project does get built successfully and assuming that the, um, that the economy, uh, picks back up again. And so I, I, I think that when we look at the various tensions that are being created as a result of this project, it's also fair to say that we have to be, uh, continuing to do this work. And if that work is created because we get so much pressure, okay, from people that have economic incentives, then I, I say so be it. It's not pleasant. I don't think it's fair. Um, but at the end of the day, what I've tried to work for is, um, a, a better conversation and a better way of doing things. I appreciate my colleagues on, on, on council for also, uh, putting in that work. But at the same time, um, we, we just have to be really clear-headed about the fact that this is actually gonna make the housing crisis, um, a, a bit, a bit more challenging. Uh, we, uh, we have to be really clear-headed about the fact that infrastructure for San Jose trying to build a five-mile bar extension underground has gone from a seven billion dollar estimate to a nine billion dollar estimate. And I'm not exaggerating. That's, that's the federal government actually adding a couple billion dollars. It's ten miles to Deardong Station from Deans College. And so if we really want to be part of that equation and, you know, build out a transit system, I think we should. I, I think we should absolutely do that for, you know, a semi, a demi-century, a century, you know, kind of pers- perspective. You know, the, the types of impact fees that we're looking at on, on the transit side, on the transportation side of this project are basically nothing. And so every penny that's out there, I think we should be asking for ten, you know? Um, so, 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 so that's, that's where I look at this. And, and I know that there's just so much work to be done in order to make sure that this is, um, you know, ultimately successful. Um, I, I, I really, you know, with, with the limitation of the amount of time that, you know, I basically imposed on this, we, we don't have, we don't have, uh, time to really get into any, any, any measure of the details of the challenges that face us. But, but that's where we stand right now. And, um, with regard to trying to move forward on this, I, you know, commend staff for their work. I wish you the best of luck. I think that DEH is doing a good job. I, I think that the applicant is, uh, understanding where we're coming from with regard to making sure that we want to make, we want to, we want to keep everyone safe and healthy. You know, I, I think we're all very sincere about that. And so, um, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and wrap that. But I think the, the final word of caution here is there are no shortcuts. There are no easy wayouts. You know, you can think you can buy your way out of problems, but at the end of the day, we have to do the work. And the work here is actually compounded severely with regard to trying to do an end run around our local, local process. And I said this, I, I said this to the applicant and he repeated it, the, the project manager repeated it back to me during this last seven or eight months, when I've been trying to connect council, uh, with the applicant. Um, you know, because I, I just don't think we should be fighting each other by proxy. Uh, you know, we can disagree, let's just disagree directly. The applicant said to me, you told me a couple of years ago that you can go ministerial, but I, I control the ministers. Um, I, I choose the ministers. And, y- you know, that's not, that's not anything I ever set out to do. I never set out to, you know, as Gene Bedord likes to say, hire six or seven city managers or whatever your count is, Gene. I, I never set out to do that. But with regard to being able to make sure that this project and our city gets this right, I, I think that we need to make sure that we have a very clear-eyed view of precisely what we're doing and, you know, how we're trying to tackle these problems. So, um, you know, I, I look at it and I apologize, I have gone over, so, you know, Councilmember Moore, I've taken those, you know, minutes back. I'll go ahead and add them to, you know, whoever wants to expound here. Um, and, you know, Councilmember Moore and Vice Mayor Chow, I do see your hands raised. But I think that it is, it is a cautionary tale in one sense, but it is also something that if we, if we draw upon, uh, what has made us successful, we can also continue that success. It's just the fact that, um, you know, I want to make sure that we have these, these direct dialogues and that we're honest with each other and we're very clear-headed about what our challenges are that we face as a result, not just of this project, but of a, a lot of the various pressures as a result of our, uh, our economic success. So, so, so in closing, I would say let's, let's celebrate what we've done well, but let's just be very careful about the repercussions of that. And there are really no, uh, easy ways, uh, out to, um, you know, creating a, a truly cohesive and effective community. Thanks. Okay. So I have hands raised from actually Councilmember Willie, Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Moore. And so let me go back in the order that we originally spoke. Councilmember Way, did you want a, a follow-up as well?
I'll let him.
Yeah. Okay. So I, I timed myself out at eleven-thirty. I took, uh, three minutes and gave it to Councilmember Moore, so we're right around fifteen. And, and so we'll, we'll go ahead and reset that. Um, Councilmember, um, Count, let me go backwards and, and here, Councilmember Willie, you have another five minutes and a half. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Moore, that would give you another couple of minutes. And Vice Mayor Chow, that would give you approximately eight more minutes. And so why don't we start with you, Vice Mayor Chow?
Okay. So, um, I think we found out a lot more about environmental pollutants after the project has been approved. And we found out the, the two thousand sixteen report that was not made available to the city. So I would like to know if the project is submitted today as a brand-new project, given what we know, um, the environmental, um, issues on this project, would this project still qualify under SB thirty-five?
Yes.
It was still?
Yes.
So the, so all these in pollutant will be waived?
Yeah. So, so, uh, clear, right. So clearly there, there are pollutants present, present on the site. You know, there's no arguing that. But there, the, the, the criteria for, um, inclusion or exclusion as an SB thirty-five site, um, depends on specific listings under different, um, regulatory programs and sites identified by state agencies. Um, and, um, and, and this site, um, was not on those lists in 2018 and is not on those lists now.
So for a normal project, let's say Westport, um, the project is approved, but the city would adopt, say, uh, dark sky and birth safe ordinance maybe after the project is approved. I don't remember the specific timeline, assuming that's adopted after. A normal project usually it's when, I think they pull the permits, they need to comply with our city standard, uh, when they pull the permits rather than when we approve the project. Is that true?
So, so, so generally in permitting, you know, the city will, you know, apply the, the standards that are in place at ti- the time the permit is issued. Um, if a project, um, you know, in, in a normal project that doesn't have anything like SB thirty-five that, you know, is effectively, you know, allows the developers' rights to, to vest early, you know, the city could know, the city could, you know, apply new standards up until the time, until a building permit is pulled and substantial costs are incurred in reliance on that building permit. That's kind of the standard doctrine for vested rights. SB 35 is, you know, one of a number of statutes that creates, you know, effectively an early vesting procedure. And that's, that's why we're not allowed to apply standards that were adopted after 2018.
So if they amend the project many times, they still only need to apply the 2018 standard? And that's under SB 35? What other state bills have this kind of?
There's a somewhat different mechanism, but the Housing Accountability Act has a similar language that locks in standards that are in place when.
So SB 330?
SB 330 is part, yes, the Housing Accountability Act is amended by SB 330, correct?
So those projects also would lock in the design standard at the time of submission?
As early as the submission of a preliminary application, correct?
Only a preliminary application, yeah. So that, okay. And with the about three thousand something parking spaces, how many spaces are for each use? Do you have the breakdown?
So many of the spaces are for shared use. I don't know if Pew can provide any information on how the uses are allocated, if we know that.
Since that was not part of the review of the project, I don't have the, but I can, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but I could pull the plans up to take a quick look at that.
Okay, thank you. If it takes a few time, I'll ask the next question. So can we bring up that modified green roof plan? The one that's shown earlier?
Give me just one second, I have to.
By the way, regarding the number of, the number of square foot per office worker, I believe the industry standard is 200 square foot and approaching 150 square foot per worker because of the high office rent. And I think 400 square foot per worker is not realistic.
It's pretty optimistic, yeah.
So I think 2 million square feet would mean about 10,000 more workers, which compared with existing Cupertino workers, Cupertino currently has 30,000 workers. And about 80% of them commute in from elsewhere. That's according to the market analysis from 2018, 2014. So we are adding 30%, 33% extra workers from this one project. And imagine how much, how much extra traffic that's going to add to Cupertino.
About two and a half more minutes.
So for this green roof, I believe they are claiming most of the green roof to be private open space. If the city waives the impact fee, even if we waive the impact fee of, I don't know how many million dollars, this is a part that could be open. This is a part that they would consider to be open, that's about four to five acres. And it goes from ground level to about, I believe, eight stories in the, on this end?
Yeah, I think that's about right. It rises, it's a sloped, it's a sloped area that rises up.
So it's a sloped area. And so basically you have to climb up to that height, right? And right now, those are not open, but if we, even if we waive parkland fee, this is the only part that could be open.
Let me call on Pew here, who has a hand raised, Pew.
Yes, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the green roof portion actually extends down to the ground level and it actually extends all the way down to the black line at the bottom of that screen over there that the vice mayor was drawing on.
What's our number of acres, correct, Pew? Four to five acres asserted by the project, the revised project?
It is about four acres, I believe, continues to be about four acres, but the area that the vice mayor was drawing, it was, it extended a little bit further south than where the red marks were on the vice mayor's drawing.
Further south? I think you mean west, Pew. I mean.
It's further west, yes, technically west, south of the screen.
Yeah, further towards the bottom of the screen.
Correct.
Yeah, but pretty narrow areas.
Correct, yes.
Yeah. So this is, you could probably have a really fun slide, but you can't really throw a frisbee or kick a ball. That's the kind of park space.
Okay, that's a, do you mind if I ask a real quick question with your, so Pew, is that sloped acreage or is that kind of ground cover acreage that was calculated?
My understanding is that some portion of that, I believe there's a cross section, let me pull that up because that'll help, help you see how that works.
How is it calculated? Was it calculated based upon the surface area of the slope or the surface area of the ground underneath the?
My understanding is they said that it was going to be ground level, so there isn't like, there isn't any structures below it, but it is not flat.
Right, well, I guess what I'm saying, if the hypotenuse of a right triangle, right, is like five, is five units, but it's like three, three high and four long, is it considered like, are they measuring by five or are they measuring by four? If you understand what I'm saying.
No, no, I understand what you're saying. I think it's just the surface areas, so they're measuring by five.
Okay, but by the, okay, got it.
By the hypotenuse, yes.
Right, all right. Okay, so Councilmember Moore, you have, actually, I realize I ceded over a few of my minutes, so you actually have five minutes more.
I did want to add that I do have the parking numbers if the council is interested.
Oh, sure, as Councilmember Moore's transitioning to the overhead projector, sure. And Pew, what are those numbers?
So they are up on the screen right now for residential parking, there's about 20, 350 stalls. For office parking, there is on the east side, close to 2,925, 2,927 really. There's shared commercial parking on the west side, which is about 2,155. And then there's some street parking limited in number at about 151 stalls.
Okay, all right, thanks, Pew. Councilmember Moore, you're up.
Okay, and thank you, Pew. And I was wondering if you could also, if you're aware of how many million square feet of above ground residential parking space and amenity space was counted for the residential side in the, in the new plan? I'd be interested in seeing that. So in this, in this section, you can see where they, they started their one to one setback line at the through lane curb line as opposed to, and then added in the two frontage lanes and didn't start the one to one setback line there, which would have made the whole, the whole building not comply. And then, and that's, from what my understanding is that that's, that's how they did it back in 2018 and we are subject to that decision. Now, what bothers me with this, with this image that the public has given is that if I were to look at this, I would wonder why anybody was, was having a problem with this project because it looks like it's one, two, three, four, it's only six stories high. What are people complaining about? And then there was the previous picture, well, I won't pull it up, but you don't need to see it again, with the green roof, is that it, because they shaded the balconies and concrete areas in, from what it looks like, the same or very similar to the green roof, it's deceptively looking as though there's a lot more green grass area. And then there's, we don't exactly know what the green roof is going to be when it, in its final edition. So I think even this image, and I really appreciate Peggy Griffin for bringing this up, it doesn't show us the full picture because of the, it's so small, but these are 267 foot towers and this is showing us two, but there's actually seven of these. And then I drew a little image of approximately what 19800 Wolf would look like across the street from it. So you're seeing, this is a huge difference in height. And then you have to consider the, the impact to the sewage system, storm drain system, and the water system that this, this project is, is going to have, which is going to be pretty formidable. And I have to say, since they did qualify for the 50% density bonus, I'm almost wishing they, they took it at this point because they're causing at least a 3,410 housing unit deficit by having so much office in the, in the project. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. You used two and a half minutes of that, and so you're right at the 15. Councilmember Willie, you have another five minutes and a half.
Great. I'd kind of like to preface that, wow, I think we all share the concerns on the many aspects, the job housing balance, the contamination, getting the project built as soon as possible, but making sure all the issues are, are looked at with respect to the community. That kind of being said, let's go back to the particular topic that I thought was needing to be addressed, and that's with the park space. Maybe the city manager can bring back the Two Plaza pictures? That's our park space. And my recollection is, and again, it's recollection because we're not allowed to be a part of the process, the recollection is that their on the ground park space was supposed to be, I think, six acres. Now, so if we take the east side plaza, let's see if my pen, and I think I heard tonight that the city manager said that that is going to be closed to the community altogether?
The public access easement would be removed.
So the community, this roughly 60,000 residents that we have in our community, if they were to buy an ice cream cone and have their dog, they're not allowed to walk over there.
I'm going to look at our city attorney, but I believe it's not that they can't work, walk there, it's just that they would have the ability to shut it off while we get to Chris.
Yeah, I think, I think similar to the response to Councilmember Way's question earlier, that, you know, their, their access would be at the discretion of, of the property owner in the absence of some kind of public access easement.
Well, that's a little bit better than what I originally thought. Now, when I look at that east side one, you know, it's supposed to be a total of about six acres on the ground, per my recollection, and yet I see what looks like multiple buildings within that plaza. And so it, how much park space or space that would qualify as park space is in the east plaza? That would be a question for city staff that I'd like to have them measure and ultimately put in a package on the website so our community knows. I'd like to have them do the same thing for the west side plaza, which I guess is accessible if somebody comes and gets a hamburger and, and ice cream at one of the stores, can then walk out in this plaza. But again, ah, it sure looks like it's mostly occupied by buildings. Again, how much of that is truly park space? Not necessarily, you know, concrete barriers and things of that nature, but, but park space, because it really doesn't look like there's any place there to, to simply have your dogs run around and throw frisbees and stuff. So I think both of those, I would ask that the city staff get out their calipers, measure the amount of park space, and make that available to the community. Now, if you go back to the original plan for the 30 acres of park space, I'd really like, again, to ask the city staff to get out their calipers and measure, my recollection again, is that this was touted as a 30 acre elevated park space. So if that's 30 acres, please confirm that that does in fact add up to 30 acres of accessible, walkable, playable park space. Now let's flip back to the today's view. And so I'd like city staff to now also use their calipers on this, how much park space is now left in this rendering? And I'd like it differentiated. If it's fenced off so-called yards per unit, you know, residential unit, and that's his little yard and it's fenced off, then in my view, it does not count as what the intent of the general plan said park space. So how much park space is left with a divider between accessible park space versus unacceptable park space? If a lot of this is truly going to be fenced so that nobody can go across, I'm not talking about yard fences because that, that is unique to the unit. We've got, you know, 22 stories of apartments, and yet only one of them is going to have the, the yard, so to speak, on the, on the 30 acre green roof area that is now unaccessible to all those other units that don't have access to it. So how many acres are park space whether, and put a dividing line between accessible to the community, not accessible to the community?
About a minute or so, John.
And then when I showed the side view with the towers now extending out over the park space, so once you have those previous numbers I talked about, now the next level of computation, if, if we're not going to count park space underneath an overpass, I don't think we should be counting that park space that's underneath extending buildings and saying that that's considered park space. You look up, you see concrete, concrete and steel beams. I think we need to do that, put it on the website, let the community know. All we can do is make the information known to the community and not be a surprise to them. Transparency. The jobs housing ratio, I'm also concerned about. So.
Councilmember Willie, that's about a wrap for your.
Can I have just 30 seconds?
Sure.
You know, in industry, when a project is done, it is very common to do a postmortem. How did that final project end up based on its original computations and assumptions? This project may be done in five years, 10 years, 15 years. Obviously, we'll be off the city council at that time, I'll be at that podium asking for a postmortem. How many workers are now occupying all those units? How many people are living in all those units? And how much park space is there? So that we preserve the integrity of future projects to make truthful assumptions and presentations and, and make sure the community gets a fair shake. Thank you for the extra time.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Willie. And that basically concludes our round. And Councilmember Way, you did not use many of your minutes, actually, so you still have a little under 10 minutes remaining of your 15. Yeah, so let's go to Councilmember Way. And I'll let, you know, everyone just wrap up briefly after that. Councilmember Way?
Can I share a screen?
Yes, please, use the function on your Zoom.
Is that shared?
It's on the Zoom screen, yes.
All right, so I think you guys, you guys get me so interested in about this park space. I'm hearing two stories or two facts. One is the city has never really considered rooftop a park for us. Is that a correct assumption or a fact?
Yeah, so the city has, has never accepted the, the green roof dedication as parkland, that's correct.
Okay, so when we met, Councilmember Willie and I, we met with, thanks for Mayor for Wenchett, we did ask him about the park space and as Vice Mayor Circ. we did ask him about the park space, and as Vice Mayor circled the place, I believe that is going to be open to the public, whether we accept that as park space or not. That is my understanding. Is that correct or not correct?
I, you probably have more accurate information than I do, I could defer to you on that as well.
Maybe Pew knows better?
I think Pew does have her microphone up. Vice Mayor Chow, I know you wanted to say something, but you're, this is Councilmember Way's time.
I'm asking a question, I'm just confirming it.
Let's go to Pew, did you want to say something on that front?
Yes, I did want to say that at this point, we're not aware of any fencing that prevents people from accessing the green roof, which they actually, they identify, rather I should say, on what they call the West Perimeter Park, and that's identified on Sheet E 0507. But there is controlled access points along Street A, which the perimeter road is labeled as Street A on this map.
Okay, because I said specifically here about they're gonna have elevators go up there so people can go up there, but I guess we can confirm.
As an option, yes, as an option, you have elevators that go up there, yes.
So what I would like to point out is this paragraph, so I read very closely our staff report and the RICE report. The project open space programming and operations, it looks like if really carefully, as described below, because the city has elected not to provide park fee credit for public access easement dedication that has been offered over the open space areas, including the plazas, the tentative map is being amended to remove the easement. So that means the easement that the city has, so that we have the right for our residents to go and enjoy the park space as we see it. So, given the applicant's interest in providing a parkland solution for the park deficit east side of Cupertino, these areas will continue to provide community gathering space, connectivity and opportunities for our community events. I'm gonna skip all this and go back to the last sentence. The public access easement and the property rights such as easement would afford the public could be restored if the city agrees to provide park fee credit as originally envisioned. I'm not going back to the original envisioned, because I don't know what that was, I wasn't there when it is approved, but I have, it gives me hope that if we really like park space, can you put up the map, the new map? Because I love, when I go to New York, I love to walk the Highland. It's a great long walk, you can walk across stores, across, you know, companies, and overseeing streets, and I had a lot of high hope that this could provide that, and I know Councilmember Willie really likes it, so if you can put up the map, oh, I have done share, sorry, stop sharing. Yes, so if I really, if I understand correctly, they, according to our conversation with them, they will make this part open for the public, whether we give them a credit or not. But what I really love is a walkway that we can walk around, like the Highland, you know, we can walk around, walk back, and it's just really nice, a long walk overseeing companies, streets, but it looks like we're not getting that because they are, they got rid of the easement, because we're not ready to negotiate. So what I'm saying is, I do believe this project is ministerially approved, there are a lot of things we cannot change, and a lot of them, a lot of us don't like certain features of the project, especially the height, and I don't like that either. But I do think there are quite a few things we might be able to negotiate or collaborate and get the community input so that we could get something that we love. So I have hope, I hope maybe we could do that. I don't know if that's possible with under mayor's leadership, or, you know, because you did open up conversations with us, to them individually. So I wonder if there is room, we can make this project a little bit better for our residents, so we get something we want, right? And as for dark sky and the birth safety environmental issues, what I would like to say to Sand Hill and to Reed Moore is, you know, let's make this, if Sand Hill is a proud and reputable international developer, it would want advanced climate actions, it would want to be environmental stewardship, and it would want to be us, not just Cupertino residents, maybe worldwide say, wow, they didn't have to do this, but they are environmental stewardship, they understand the importance of climate actions, that they would do this because it's the right thing to do. So I'm hoping that with community input, with everyone's, you know, input to them, that they would be that developer that has that environmental stewardship, that they'll do it on their own, and I'm hoping that that could happen. And for other things, I think we might be able to still negotiate something in there, even though there are a lot of things we cannot control, there are things we don't like, but it is things we cannot change, I'm reading a lot of things online, if we can accept things that we cannot change, but move forward with something that we can change, then we can make the project better for our residents, and I think it's our responsibility as city council members to think about what our residents want, and for things we cannot change, how can we make it better? How can we open up partnerships, collaborations, and make it better for our residents?
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Way. You know, I'll go ahead and, you know, go first on wrapping. I want to make it clear, you know, the rhetoric about my leadership, I think it should be made clear that what I'm trying to do is to make sure we don't create an environment in our community where people are attacking each other through proxies. And so, this direct conversation, that's precisely what I'm trying to foster here too, and I'm not going to go to bat for, you know, something that is, you know, basically, you know, driven largely by financial interests, and going to say, you know, I think at the end of the day, this is great, when in fact, that's kind of the easy way out. So, you know, to the points, you know, that have been made tonight, I think we all contribute to that, you know, process of trying to make something better, but I think some of us contribute in sort of this fashion that drives other people to actually do the work, you know, and the work really is, if it's not clear that there are aspects to a particular project that are extremely challenging, and the financial interests are there to go ahead and, you know, kind of obscure those challenges, then we really need to go to the drawing board, and we need to, we need to be very firm. And when it comes to toxic contamination, you know, the true pressures upon housing, the pressures upon infrastructure, those are the hard climbs here. And so I don't think we should be like Pollyanna and, you know, think that we can ultimately, you know, get quoted, and not actually, you know, call out the people that are really doing the tough climbs. So I think at the end of all of this, what I can say is that in terms of trying to make sure that, you know, we get the maximum types of alleviations of some of these pressures, I think there are a lot of different ways of looking at, you know, a complicated equation. This project probably gives us at least a dozen really complicated, you know, issues, housing and transit and, you know, infrastructure, there's only a few of them. But like, if you look at the park dedication, I think it's probably right that, you know, the space is gonna be there, you know, and there are a lot of things that we can be doing with park fees. We should be fighting for park fees, we should optimize the park, the transportation, even the affordable housing fees, I think they're quite justified because of the original analysis that got us to this point. You know, but I do want to be really clear, we need to have a community conversation that is a bit less snarky at the end of the day, and I mean this to everyone, but let's not perpetuate this, I mean, it's not necessary to create a situation where we can play this, you know, now 260-foot game of gotcha, you know, this is one of these things where, you know, we've gone a few bridges too far in this conversation, so, you know, thank you for, you know, everyone and their work, and this is a cohesive whole at the end of the day, but, you know, we have had a long, a long journey to get to this point, and there's gonna be, you know, I think, probably much longer by three or even four or fivefold to get to resolution here. So, thanks for entertaining that. I'll go ahead and open this up to anyone else who has some closing comments for this study session. Vice Mayor Chow, then Councilmember Moore?
So regarding the rooftop access, I specifically had discussion with Reed Moore. The trail that you are envisioning, Councilmember Way, they are all private open space.
I know that.
So, but you were giving people false hope that with negotiating, they can be open, they are not up for negotiation. And then even the lower part that I was trying to draw, the lower part, that's four acres or five acres, that's closed as of today, unless we waive the tens of millions of parks fee that they want us to waive, otherwise, there will be a gate, it will be closed. They are saying that it could be open, but only if we waive those fees, and that needs to be clear. And I have a question about the perimeter bike trail. So the perimeter tree, are they going to be also private? Or are they, do we have easement over that?
Yeah, so the easement on the perimeter bike trail was removed, presumably that, you know, they'll still allow access to the trail, but the easement was removed.
So we had the easement in the last virgin, and now they removed that, so they basically could put a gate there, so there will be no access to the perimeter road, bike trail?
The access would be at their discretion, correct?
And then I think there was envision the bike trail going underground to the other side of the Wolf, so that's also no easement, public easement, so they can close that too.
That's my understanding as well, Pew can jump in if I'm not correct.
Okay, so then I have a question regarding this chart, let me share the screen. So this is in their plan set, that is as community open space, but it looks like all of this community open space are not really open to the community of Cupertino, but it's open only to the RICE community? The West, East Plaza, you said that we have no easement over there. So, perimeter road, we have no easement. So are these all closed to the public?
At this point, there is no fencing proposed around the plazas to keep people out, presumably they wish for this project to be a success, which would, you know, imagine that these spaces would be open to the public for use?
If they have stores there, but for West Plaza, because there is no retail, so they don't have to open that. They could make that a gate to the community, right?
Potentially, yes.
And so all of this space that we see here, are they all technically private open space?
The other open space is pretty much private open space, except for potentially the commercial balconies and terraces, but even that is possibly the ones for the office space. So that would all be private open space for the users of that space. The community open space may or may not be open, depending on how they envision the project to work.
So we don't currently have any objective standard on the amount of open, public open space a project has to provide, right?
That is correct, not for this project.
And do we usually have that for other project?
Well, for this one, there was a specific plan that was envisioned, and in the specific plan, it did talk about six acres of open space.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. And did you want to wrap, you have another half minute or so?
Yeah, I think I would just want, I think another thing is with the ash tree along Stevens Creek, are they all going to be cut down? The two rows of ash trees that people love?
I believe there are 12 additional trees that are proposed to be cut down along Wolf Road, some of which are the ash trees.
How about Stevens Creek?
I don't believe there's anything impacted along Stevens Creek at this point, however, the curbs and such are fairly close to some of these ash trees, they are trying to keep as many as possible, so unless they're in direct conflict, they aren't proposed to be removed at this time.
Okay, that's good to know. Yeah, thank you, I think the main point is, we need, people should know that with SB 35, it undercuts a lot of existing process that we use for any other regular projects, and this version of the amendment actually reduced a lot of public benefits that they had even in the last one, and there is nothing the city can do, and they can do another amendment and make it even worse.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Next we have Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. I have a question about the roadway easements which we have around TJI Fridays and the former Alexanders. Those, how much is the city being paid for those easements, since easements are worth money, and they do provide really good access to the Simeon property on the west side and to the Hyatt House on the east side? So I would think that both of those property owners would want to ensure that those roadway easements were maintained in place. And when we went back to the original tentative subdivision map, there was an option that if the city did not choose to let those easements go, that there was going to be an alternative plan, and when they got to the final approved set from the city, that plan was not included in it, but it was referenced. So I'm wondering if this new tentative subdivision map still accounts for the roadway easements that the city owns, and then if the city staff has decided to give those easements away and not have the city council have a legislative hearing about it, how much money have you negotiated for us, for the city to receive for them? And then I want to mention also that, first, the parkland, I'm coming up with $130 million for using the 13.08 CMC calculation, using 1.8 times the 2402 times 10 million per acre divided by 1,000, so the actual value of the parkland they should be providing is about $130 million, and I think the public should be aware of that, that it's actually a huge benefit to the developer to build this roof up there and not have to give away the land because he would not be able to develop that area. And then also, this is the largest project in the city's history, I appreciate that we're having this one informational item tonight on this, but I feel that the amount of time that we're being given, the amount of visual aids that we've been provided with are very insufficient for the public to have a good concept of what they're actually going to end up with. They don't, we don't even have an image of what it would be like to drive down Wolf Road when this project is completed. I'm disappointed with the low turnout that we have here, and I just simply don't know that people are totally informed about what's going to be happening in the future. So going back to the easements, if I could have some information about that, for how much money the city has negotiated for them.
So the city isn't giving away the easements, the easements are being relocated pursuant to the tentative map process that's outlined in SB 35, and that, you know, the easements will be formally vacated and dedicated at the new location when the final map is approved?
Okay, so just to clarify, so the largest project in the city's history is going to have easements removed and relocated by staff's determination, is that right?
That's correct, that's the statutory process.
Councilmember Moore, are you, are you completed?
Oh yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Vice Mayor Chow, before we go back to you, I'm gonna check in with Councilmember Willie and Councilmember Way. Did either of you have any closing comments?
Yeah, so, and how long do we get for the closing comments?
Four and a half minutes.
Oh, wow. Great, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, to me, this presentation tonight was really long overdue. Per the staff report, you know, the revised plan, you know, was put in March 24th, and this is the first that we in the community have been able to discuss it together. And this is the first that we and the community have been able to discuss it, uh, together. Uh, and the deadline is Friday. So, long overdue and so, in my view, so important to the community that they know we're looking over everything, trying to do whatever we can for them. I'll sidestep for a couple minute, and, you know, for a couple minutes, and that is, I truly believe this city council wants the project to move along. I don't think any of us would have expected it to take this long. Is there, is there, you know, some thinking that we don't want that? Well, Westport came to the city council and the first time back in whatever it was, uh, 2016. And the previous city council looked at it from the outside. I looked at it and it looked exactly like what the developer was doing at Valco. The Westport developer was copying that. We can make this dense, this tall office buildings. And of course, the city council had a huge problem with it. The community had a huge problem with it. It was office. It was office. We already have a, a, uh, a lot of traffic during traffic hours. We have residents telling us that they come off of, uh, out of their house on Foothill Expressway and come down through Cupertino and what should be a 10-minute drive is, you know, 40 minutes. So city council is meant to, to try and, and create things that, and work with the developer and create things that fit for the community, that, that generate a profit. Westport got approved by this city council with a 5-0 vote. And it's a housing project. He brought it to us as the housing project and we made our comments. He met with each one of us. I made my comments about access to the, the inner park area. And he brought it to us and we gave him the feedback and he had said that he wanted to reduce the, the retail from 20,000 square feet down to 8,000 square feet. He only had five BMR units, but he wanted all the waivers and wanted to take the height up to, to 90 feet rather than the allowed 45. And we, we talked, we told him what we felt the concerns of the residents would be and he went off and made adjustments. And when he brought it back, the three developers that were then going to be purchasing each one con, one portion of that project said, wow, we're happy with the improvements.
One more minute.
Yeah. The, the number of, uh, units for the BMR and for the senior got increased, something on the order of like 27 memory care units. The 8,000 square feet of retail got put back and the access to the inner green was, was increased. And those three developers that then bought those sections, in my memory, all said, wow, we really like this project. So the, the job that we do up here is intended to, to help foster that. Had we, that night, first night that it came to us and we made those, those comments and he went back, had we approved it that night, there would, there would not be those additional benefits. I think the, the, uh, memory care units had been already put in by that night, but the retail got put back in, the access to the inner green got, got installed and he ultimately sold all three of those portions.
Please wrap, Councilmember Willie.
Made his large profit and we would be happy, happy to do that same type of process here. Yeah, it's not a slam dunk. We're gonna look at how it fits with the community and then approve a project and then help it get moved along as fast as possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie.
The, the green fence is up and things are moving for Westport. And it could be the same here.
I'm gonna ask, uh, that we conclude the wraps. Um, so we've all had a chance to speak except Councilmember Way. Did you, okay, Councilmember Way. And then I'll, I'll bring it back. Vice Mayor Chow, you, you seem to have, um, you know, a pressing urge to speak and so we'll bring it back after Councilmember Way, um, makes her, uh, wrapping up her remarks.
Yeah, so, um, I'm just listening to Councilmember Willie and I totally agree. You know, um, have our council and our residents work with developers, that's the ideal thing to do. So, um, I still consider myself pretty new, even almost two years on the job. So what I vowed and I think every council should do is avoid another SB 35 project. It, it's, you know, it's ministry approval, it's not good for our staff, it's not good for the residents, it's not good for the council. And we really need to make the best effort to represent the residents and to avoid another SB 35 project in our community. And I, I think that's what, um, I would dedicate myself to do and I think our council can do it together. And I understand this Valco project is not an ideal project. If we have a current, our current, um, general plan allows for, uh, 1.2 million square footage of retail plus 389 units of housing up to 600 with density bonus, that's also going to bring jobs. And, and, and so not, what I'm trying to say is not, every project is not an ideal project. And I'm still have hope that our council and residents can work with the RISE and make a better programming within the project that's there to represent our residents to the best we can. We need your input, we need rational, reasonable partnerships, we need to get rid of whatever previous water under the bridge. Let's move forward to make this project a better place, a better, better project than what is now. So that, that's my conclusion. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Councilmember Way. And then, um, I, I can, Vice Mayor, what is it that you wanted to go over as we've had, uh, wrapping comments?
I have one.
About how much time would you need to?
I do have some wrapping, wrapping comments I really want to make, but first I want to clarify regarding the tentative map.
No, 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 the way we're gonna do this is that you're gonna say how much time you need and we're gonna make a decision as to whether, you know, that makes sense to, to grant.
Okay.
So about how much time would you require here?
Three to five minutes.
Three to five minutes? Um, you know, I, I think to be fair to everyone, since you already had that opportunity to wrap, let's just go ahead. If everyone's okay with it, to provide you three minutes, that, that's everything and then we'll just, you know, stop it there. Is that?
Okay.
Is that workable? All right. Go ahead.
So, okay, I guess I'll skip my question. Um, I think the problem here we have is not SB 35. Problem is we have a site. We have given them 2 million square feet of office without building height and, uh, objective standards. What we need is to strengthen objective standards across our municipal code so that whatever project that comes along, we can control whether there will be SB 35 project or not. And, uh, I have a good friend who supports Valco and he told me he's poor housing. I laughed. I said, are you really sure? This way Cupertino approved, identified the five housing element site, the only project that faced opposition is Valco because of the huge amount of office it's allocated. And, uh, anyone who says they are poor housing, but they are for Valco is hypocrite. Because Valco generate 10,000 jobs plus the retail and only provides 2,400 units of housing. And, uh, I, we have people come here, say they are poor affordable housing, when they did not say one word about the small amount of media studio, mostly one-bedroom studio units, when they should have provided a comparable size of market rate units. And this is not the kind of affordable housing that this project is supposed to provide. There should be comparable amount of affordable and market rate housing. That's what made the, uh, therefore, this kind of ministry SB 35 project is supposed to build on, but we don't have that. We have a mini, a very small amount of affordable housing. In terms of units, yes, but in terms of square footage, it's minimal.
One, one minute, Vice Mayor.
Housing, poor affordable housing, you have to, as council members, we need to continue to push, like Westport. Because of we pushed, eventually we have a better project with more units and then we maintain the retail, retail space we have. If we don't push, if we keep saying, okay, 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 we are not going to get a better project. So it's our obligation to push to get a better project. And I think that's, uh, the obligation of this council. Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks, uh, very much, everyone, for, uh, really quite an excellent, um, meeting tonight. It was a good check-in. This is a special meeting and so we don't have any further items on our agenda. I will remind everyone that we have a regularly scheduled council meeting one week from tonight that starts at 6:45 PM. Unless we have a study session, actually, I think it might start at either 5:00 or 5:30. So check your agenda, that should come out tomorrow or the next day. Thank you very much, everyone, and meeting adjourned.